You call them poinsettias or poinsettias? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to get started with the last council meeting of 2021. It is Tuesday, December the 7th, just after 4:00 PM. And we will start off our council meeting as we always do with the singing of Oh Canada. And before I ask you to stand, I will do a little bit of an introduction to our singer for tonight. Gabby. Gabby is seven years old. She loves to sing. Her family is fairly new to Canada, and they now live here in Niagara Falls. She's been singing since she was three years of age and has a passion for singing like her older sister. She's taking music lessons at Niagara Institute of Music and Arts. Please help us welcome Gabby to the screen.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glory hearts we see heroes, our children strong and free. Our foreign mind, oh Canada, we stand our guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand our guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand our guard for thee.
All right. Yeah. Oh, please be seated. Gabby, that was a lot of energy. Thank you for belting that one out for us tonight. We really appreciate all the effort that you put into it. It takes a lot of bravery to sing the National Anthem in front of a bunch of people, so great job. Excellent. All right, moving along. With the aim of educating our community and acknowledging the many land treaties that overlay the city of Niagara Falls and the region, I invite Stacy LaForme, Chief of the Mississaugas of the Credit, to join us once again to share testimony as we acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who are stewards of this land for millennia before us. Ask our staff if they would please play the video.
I'm Chief of the Mississaugas of the Credit. I'd like to acknowledge the creator, the world around us, and our place within it. I acknowledge the many nations that walked this land in the past, the many nations that walk it today, and welcome you to the treaty lands of the Mississaugas of Inishnaa Bay. The treaties with the Mississaugas are the Niagara Treaty of 1781 and the Between the Lakes Treaty of 1792. I would also like to acknowledge the Treaty of 1764 that recognized the Royal proclamation of 1763, which set a new relationship between the Indigenous people and the Crown. Chief Lumpe.
Thank you very much to Chief Stacy LaForme. We continue to share our gratitude together and give thanks for this special place that we call home. Moving along the agenda, we're looking for an adoption of the council minutes from November the 16th. Motion by Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Campbell. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. It's so nice to see you guys in the chairs here. It's so much easier than looking through three Plexiglas to see or try to hear you or... Anyway, this is so much nicer. Well, yeah. Yeah, good thing there's something separating you. Now we're looking for disclosures of a pecuniary interest. Do you have any disclosures? Councillor LaCoco, and then Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Disclosure of a pecuniary interest on 5.2, the downtown BIA, the budget and the levy, my spouse's former employer.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. 5.1, the employment lands, PBD 202179. My family owns lands in the vicinity. There's also a resolution attached to that, 10.1, and there's a bylaw attached to it as well, 2021-135. 9.5, the memo from the clerk, I would have a pecuniary interest. And 9.8, the noise bylaw exemption from St. John Newman. School is part of the board that I work for, Your Worship, which is the Agri-Catholic District School Board. I'll leave this for the clerk.
Okay, thank you for that. If there's no further disclosures, we'll go on to everybody's favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's reports and announcements. Starting off with obituaries, our former town crier for the Friends of Stanford Village passed away. Bob Cormier, official name Peter Robert Cormier. Many people knew him. He was a super, super individual, very involved in our community, passed away. Also, the city's K-9 ambassador Buddy passed away. And we know he was half of Buddy and Mike. And we're all very, very sad. And turns out, he had cancer. And turns out that cancer is very common in pets, which we were surprised to learn. Upwards of 50%, 50% of pets die of cancer. And I can tell you firsthand, Charlie, my golden doodle in February, died of cancer. And my last dog before him, 10 years earlier, Kramer, my black lab, died of cancer as well. So, more I started thinking about it, I realized, you know, that it is more common unfortunately than we'd like to think. So Buddy, obviously, there he is sitting in the mayor's chair and such a great ambassador. And he was doing so much for businesses to help them open. And they did it just for their community. He's an online sensation. Their social media was off the charts. The only little bit of good news is that now Mike has a new dog, Pal, a little German Shepherd, who has the same head tilt as Buddy. And they got to spend a few weeks together before Buddy passed on. So I know they're devastated. I know many people in the community and around social media world are very, very upset about this. So, what's going to come out of this? Well, the falls are going to be illuminated purple for pet cancer awareness on Thursday, December the 9th, from 9 until 9:15 PM. So ironically, December 9th is also International Day of Veterinary Medicine. So our SPCA is also supportive of this. And we're grateful to the Illumination Board for supporting a great cause and our nice way of doing a send-off to Buddy and to Mike for all that they did for our community. And hopefully, we'll be talking about Pal and Mike as well in the future. But right now, our heart goes out for the loss of Buddy. In memory, today marks the 32nd anniversary of the Ecole Polytechnique Mass Shooting in Montreal. Ceremonies were taking place in Montreal and across Canada Day honoring the victims' lives and calling for continued action for equality and to end violence against women. And thank you to the councillors for wearing their white ribbons today in memory of this terrible event. Certain council and senior staff birthdays are upon us. Carla Stout, in our Transit Department, Sunday, December the 5th, was her birthday. Trent Dark's birthday is this coming Sunday, the 12th. And of course, before the end of year, on Boxing Day, is Councillor LaCoco will be celebrating her birthday on the 26th of December. Another anniversary, Casino Niagara, it's hard to believe, opened up 25 years ago this Thursday. It's been 25 years, December the 9th. So this Thursday, the falls will be illuminated green and gold from 10 till 10:15. And they'll recognize the more than 690 employees who started 25, that have been with the casino for 25 years. 690 employees have been there for 25 years. The casino has welcomed more than 100 million people since then and has had a huge impact on our community. And it's helped to add to the skyline that we have. They're the number one employer in the region. And it's hard to believe, 25 years have just blown by us. The Sparkle Awards, I want to acknowledge Councillor Dubrowski, who's been involved with the Sparkle Awards and the Spooky Awards. The registration is now open until Friday, December the 10th, at 2:00 PM. This coming Friday till 2:00 PM. Participants can win one or one of five random draw prizes. The official sponsor is Niagara Peninsula Energy. And all you have to do is register online at niagarafalls.ca/sparkleawards. So again, the deadline to show off your Christmas decorations is this Friday, December the 10th, at 2:00 PM. We recently had a toy giveaway benefiting local organizations. We'd like to make sure that we thank Factor Forums for donating all of the toys, $129,000 worth of toys for children in need, and the Scotiabank Convention Center for storing those toys until we were able to give them away. And the organizations receiving the toys are Dalton's Wish, spearheaded by Councillor Mike Strange, Project Share, the Salvation Army, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters. There's a toy drive at Lifetime Financial Planning Group on Portage Road taking place, 3831 Portage Road, across from Sobies. They've been doing this for 24 years. They donate toys to the Salvation Army for all kids during the holidays. And they will be collecting toys up to Monday, December the 13th. So thank you to Al Filer and the Lifetime Financial Planning Group for what you've been doing for 24 years for kids in our community. Like to thank Councillor LaCoco for representing the city at the Positive Living Flag Raising and Red Scarf Project out front of City Hall. Also, big news in our community, we kicked off the South Niagara Hospital Campaign kickoff. You know, the goal, it's hard to believe, this is going to be over a billion dollars to build the hospital. Of course, that billion dollars comes from the province, but everything inside the hospital has to be raised by the community. So that's $220 million that has to come out of our community, 220 million. So myself, along with Harry Oaks, local business person, have agreed to be the campaign co-chairs. And here within our local community, we have to raise $40 million. And we've already, we kicked off with the founding donors. We're at $18 million. We're well on our way. We're getting a lot of inquiries. Our goal is to get the goal done and go past that goal so that we can make sure it's the best outfitted hospital around so that it'll attract the best and brightest doctors, which is going to lead to the best health care for all of us. I want to thank Councillors Peter Angelo, Strange, Dubrowski, Campbell, Cario, and Thompson for being at the opening and the kickoff for the new hospital campaign fundraiser. We also had a grand opening on Friday at Synergy Niagara and Care24, Inc. Synergy Niagara is an interesting one. You know, they do treatment for men, for men's and women's menopausal issues. And for men, things like erectile dysfunction and prostate health and other issues that men have that they don't like to talk about. Yet 80, up to 80% of men are going to be affected in their lifetime by some of these things where you can go there and discreetly get non-invasive treatments and painless treatments to deal with your concerns. At Synergy Niagara, they also do hair laser removal and a lot of other things. So hypnosis. So it's a good place just downtown that you can take care of some of your issues. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, January the 18th. We'd like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and happy whatever it is that you're going to be celebrating. May you have lots of health and happiness and time with your loved ones. And we'll see you in the new year. So that concludes everyone's favorite part of the meeting. So, moving along to deputations and presentations. Before we get started, it's a reminder to any of our speakers that you only have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation. And we ask that when you do speak, that you don't repeat what's already been said. And we try to stick respectful to our timelines. So the first item is 5.1, Employment Land Strategy, Phase 3 Report. And we do have consultants from Watson and Associates and Dillon Consulting to make the presentation on the land strategy. But maybe I'll ask Mr. Hurlovich if you'd like to introduce this and if there's anything further that you have to add to the presentations. Or Sam Veleo, whoever would like to speak to it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have Brian Dick, which is our manager of policy planning, that will introduce the consultant.
Thank you, Sam. So just a quick intro. The city's employment land strategy is all about having the right amount of land in the right location to accommodate our industrial jobs forecast to the year 2051. The consultants that will be presenting, Adam Fisher, have identified that the city will be short employment land and have recommended the use of Grassy Brook for a future employment area. This recommendation aligns with, it is compatible with the region's plans to construct a new wastewater treatment plant in Grassy Brook to service all of South Niagara Falls. And I'll turn it over to Adam to give you the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council for having us here today. I'm joined by my colleague Jamie Cook and Kelly Martel from Dillon Consulting. I will definitely try and keep this brief for everyone and then open it up for any discussion. So I'm just going to share my screen quickly here. Okay, so this is the conclusion of the Phase 3 Employment Land Strategy for the city of Niagara Falls. And the purpose of this study, as Brian just spoke to, was to conduct a long-term land needs analysis to 2051, engage the stakeholder and public community on the results, and inform policy and strategic recommendations. And today's council presentation is, excuse me, is for the purposes of providing the information and the findings of the Phase 3 report. As we've discussed previously, this does fall within the context of provincial policy and the PPS 2020, and as well as the Place to Grow, which dictates policy for upper municipalities in the greater Golden Horseshoe. And of course, we've been working collaboratively with the Niagara region in accordance with their new MCR process. Now, the main purpose of today's presentation is to discuss the new potential employment areas within the city of Niagara Falls to address the shortfall of land and then landing on the preferred locations. So here we just have a slide demonstrating the greenfield areas within the city, which could potentially be appropriate for development. And as well, this map does demonstrate that many of these greenfield areas already do have a secondary plan in place and as such couldn't accommodate any future employment land. And as you can see in the bottom middle here is the Grassy Brook location, which we will be recommending as the primary location. And I will, of course, speak to that in some more detail in the coming slides. So overall, it's just, again, important to emphasize the importance of having employment lands within the city. As we've established in the report, the supply of marketable and developable employment lands is shrinking. And in order to attract continued investment into the city, it's important that the city has a cohesive employment area that they can market for a variety of different uses. And these employment lands in this prospective employment area promotes job creation and it provides places for residents to work and as well as, you know, create youth retention. So we're not losing those residents to other employment markets as we can offer employment in the city. It provides higher wage jobs. And it also positively generates the tax base within the city, lessening the reliance on just residential tax base and managing that balance between employment and residential property taxes. And overall, that leads to a more diversified economy, which can be more resistant against economic shocks, such as one we're going through at the moment. And when we look to a new employment area, we have a set of characteristics, which again, I will speak to as I go through the potential sites that we looked for when assessing these properties. So one, and most importantly, that it's located within the city's urban boundary. Two, that it has frontage and access to the QEW, which also importantly has minimal residential approachment and land use compatibility conflicts. As many businesses don't like to drive through residential neighborhoods, for example, to reach their site from the QEW. We have to make sure that there's a sufficient size to create a cohesive employment landscape where businesses can have cross-collaboration. And to this point, it's important that we look to the existing employment areas within the city and how we can leverage those existing operations and continue to build on a vision for employment within the city. And of course, the availability of municipal servicing is important and that we align with local and regional planning objectives. So here we have the employment area forecast for the city. And this is from the Niagara region, their MCR process. They allocate growth to each of the area municipalities to 2051. So we've taken that work and converted it into a land needs calculation for employment areas. So if I could just direct your attention to the very bottom row there, the sum of this analysis, when you look at the job demand and as well as the city's supply, is 76 hectares of land that's needed to 2051 to accommodate growth. So in order to accommodate this growth, we looked at five potential sites to develop a new employment area. And I will go through these sites quickly, being mindful of time. So the first site here is in the northeast end of the city, near Club Italia. And what we've done is we've established three primary principles, which the site must conform to in order for it to be a viable option for employment land development. And if those primary principles are met, then the localized criteria are further examined. And I'm not going to spend much, if any, time on the localized criteria. But if you're curious, you can find more detail in the Phase 3 report regarding each of these sites. So these Club Italia lands critically are outside of the settlement area boundary. And they do not have enough land area to accommodate demand to 51. However, adverse impacts from developing this site as an employment area would be minimal with the surrounding area. So it is really important, again, to emphasize that we primarily want to look for employment opportunities within the urban boundary as the provincial policy statement would need to be satisfied in the sense that there's no viable options for development within the employment, within the urban boundary. And if that's established, then opportunities outside of the boundary can be looked at. And also, established in this presentation, we do believe that there are viable options within the urban boundary. And location option number two is along Stanley and Logan. This site does have enough land area to accommodate the demand of 2051. And there would be a minimal adverse impacts from developing this site as an employment area. But critically, this site is also outside of the urban boundary. And you can see that's that pink line just above the site. So we wouldn't be recommending this site for development. Site three, again, critically, it's outside of the urban boundary. And furthermore, there isn't a sufficient land area to accommodate demand. So we would not recommend this site. And site four, if you recall during the last council meeting, it was suggested to us that we review this site as a potential option for employment land development. And when looking at the primary principles, this site does fall within the urban boundary. But critically, one, there's not enough land area to accommodate growth to 2051 based on this delineation. And two, developing this site as an employment area would have negative impacts on the functioning of the future South Niagara Falls hospital, which is going to be located just west of Montrose Road there. While it does fit all of the local criteria, the fact that it doesn't fit these two primary principles, again, leads us to not recommending this site as the future employment area. Which brings me to the fifth and final site, which we are calling the Grassy Brook Site, which is south of the Welland River and located closely to the Montrose Road industrial area as well as the Stanley Avenue Business Park. So this site is located within the urban boundary. There is enough land area to accommodate the demand to 2051. And developing this site would have a minimal adverse impact on the surrounding area. As you can see, there's the Welland River to the north, which functions as a buffer. You have the existing employment uses to the west from the Montrose Road. And you have Stanley Avenue to the east, providing a buffer for any kind of future land use compatibility impacts. This site, however, does have a significant degree of environmental features. So this work that we've conducted here is establishing the groundwork to move forward with secondary planning and looking at, you know, appropriate buffers to develop this site as employment, being mindful of the environmental constraints that exist. And I just added this outline here. And this is the site or the proposed location of the new wastewater treatment facility as identified by the Niagara region. This is expected to have a land area of approximately 60 hectares. And with that being said, once you account for the land area required for this site, the overall location for this employment area has a sufficient amount of land still to accommodate the shortfall of employment to 2051. And it's also important to emphasize here that the Niagara region is pursuing a 500-meter separation distance from the plant, from any sensitive land uses such as residential. And the provincial guideline is 300, but the region is moving forward with the hopes of a 500-meter separation distance to avoid any conflicts with residential uses. And which is why we'd recommend that employment is an appropriate use to abut the future wastewater treatment facility as a significant investment for the region. And maintaining the integrity of that operation is critical. And as such, employment development here would limit any long-term issues in terms of compatibility. And lastly, just looking at this site, it is already primarily zoned as industrial in the city's current zoning bylaw. As you can see here, most of the site is labeled as I for industrial. And then there is a portion to the east that's currently tourist commercial. So with that being said, the site already does have the appropriate zoning, for the most part, to develop as employment area. for the most part, to, uh, develop as employment area. So to conclude, uh, we know that the city of Niagara Falls is expected to experience an employment area, uh, shortfall, uh, by 2051. Uh, this shortfall accompanied with the difficulty of, uh, marketing the North Niagara Falls Secure Storage Employment Area, uh, where we'll acquire a new employment area to be developed. And we believe that the Grassy Brook location is the preferred site for development of a new employment area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, Adam, do we have any questions of council for Adam? Okay, seeing none at this point? Okay, I'll pass it back to you, Brian.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we do have a question. I've got Counselor LaCoco, and then Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through you to, uh, Mr. Fisher. You talked about the environmental features and going into the secondary planning and keeping buffers in mind, um, my- being mindful of the environment. How many trees, how many acres of trees or hectares of trees are we talking about at this point?
I don't have the specific number of the environmental features in front of me. I believe it's approximately 80 hectares of, uh, environmental features. However, that's not to say that these would be taken down or disrupted, just that, uh, development around them would have to be mindful of, uh, you know, not, uh, encroaching too closely, uh, to disturb the, uh, the habitats and existing, uh, natural features.
Okay, thank you. I understand it's early in the process, so as we get further in the process, we can look at that then. Okay, thank you. And then I had another question. We received two letters, one, one letter and one email regarding specific parcels of land that they're already looking at, um, developing and going through zoning. What, how can we address those? Maybe that's not for Mr. Fisher, maybe that's for our clerk or planning.
Mr. Dick, I don't know if you wanted to address that one?
Um, through the mayor to the counselor. Uh, you are correct, there are people interested in developing the properties for residential, but our study has indicated that we are actually short employment land. That is why we're proceeding with the Grassy Brook, um, employment area. We would like to do good secondary planning for this area. And we're requesting an interim control bylaw to allow us to have a pause to do the proper groundwork, to then bring forward a proper plan for the entire Grassy Brook area. Thank you.
Counselor, are you?
That's okay for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Thompson, and then Strange? And then, uh, Aynoni.
Thank you. This is, without exception, um, really confusing, uh, with respect to what the council is, uh, doing with, uh, employment lands. I have been inundated with phone calls and people, um, in the last week who own property, and they have put a lot of money in, uh, dealing with the city and, uh, have a project, uh, the one, they said they spent a million dollars so far on moving it forward with the city. And the total, um, $800 million is with the project. And then they feel, um, the city has come forward and said, "We want this as employment lands." And there's about three or four other ones who, uh, have approached me the same way with a lot of negativity, and I'm really confused. The council is responsible for zoning, and, uh, we're having consultants tell us, "Oh, this is gonna be, um, employment lands." Yes, I like the Grassy Brook, we own it, and I don't have a problem with that. But I think we have to have more respect for the people who own the other properties and have, uh, planned for what the, and have been working for it for a long time. So I really think we have to take a pause and inform the council totally about where these, uh, properties are and listen to the people who own them and what their plan is before we do anything else. Grassy Brook, I don't have a problem, but, uh, I think there would probably be other ones that, that the people would be receptive to this. But, uh, there's other ones that are very upset about what, how we're moving forward this year. And I just want to be fair and make sure we give them, and the council understands totally what this is all about. And I don't think we're doing that at this point. So I, I would like to, uh, have some response.
Okay, thank you for that. So I, uh, got Counselor Strange, Aynoni, and then Dubrowski.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with, with Counselor, uh, Thompson. Um, that, we did get an email, I think it was today, about, uh, developers, um, in particular, the lands on, uh, the, the Trailer Campground and across the street at Oakland's Golf Course, where they're anticipating to rezone and, and put, uh, a lot of units in there. And they've been consulting with, with staff for the last three years. And they're saying they're, they're out all this money if they, they put that interim control bylaw in. So they're gonna be in trouble, you know? We do need, obviously, employment lands, but we do need housing too. As you can see, everyone's moving down here in, in flocks. And I know one, that one of the developers has, he only does rentals, which, uh, uh, we need a lot in, in Niagara Falls, people renting, um, because a lot of people can't afford to buy. And, and so, um, I agree with, uh, Counselor, uh, Thompson that we need to, uh, relook at this.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Strange, Counselor Aynoni, then Dubrowski.
I, I don't want to, uh, repeat what Counselor Strange and Thompson said, um, by, because that's exactly where I was going also. But I'd want to know, when did we start changing the rules of the game, mid-game? I mean, if you've been working with staff for, I'm, I'm just reading a le- a different letter we got today. If you've been working with staff members over the years to plan your residential commercial development, how is it that they've gone this far and all of a sudden these properties are being zoned? Or, or we're asking to zone them for future, uh, employment lands? They don't understand how that happens. I'm kind of confused as to how we're, they're this far into the process, and now we're looking at changing the zoning of the lands so that all their investment is for nothing. How did we get to this point?
So maybe we get, uh, uh, Mr. Dick, if you would mind weighing in on this, maybe? Because it looks like there's some confusion. Uh, originally, the first two reports were showing that the Oakland's Golf Course was going to be developed residential. And now in interim control bylaws concerning them, because they're feeling maybe that's not an area for employment lands, and, uh, it was news to them. So maybe we can help the council understand how we got to the report today.
Uh, so through the mayor to the counselor, um, all the reports to date have never shown the Oakland's Golf Course as future employment. Um, and right now, we're just thinking that the Grassy Brook, uh, employment area will only go to Stanley Avenue. Uh, looking forward as part of the secondary plan process to do proper planning, we look at an area beyond the employment area and consult, um, from the QEW to the Welland River, to Lyons Creek, and then to the, uh, confluence of Lyons Creek and Welland River to do a broader planning study for the area. That does not mean that the Oakland's Golf Course would be designated as employment, it's just part of this study area. But back to the consultant's work, we're looking at an employment area at just being all to up to, or should pardon me, up to Stanley Avenue. Oh, and back with respect to the applications, uh, there has been consultations with staff. They have appeared at pre-con, our pre-consultation, but the applications have not been deemed complete, nor have they been circulated for comments. I would ask Andrew Bryce of our staff if he could comment further on the pre-con process to formally inform council.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes, through you, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have conducted a pre-consultation for the Oakland's Golf Course. Uh, we received a submission, and we've actually just received a submission. We don't, uh, we haven't deemed it complete yet. As far as, uh, the future processing, once it's deemed complete, typically it's circulated to external agencies for comment. Uh, and we have a, um, an open house, uh, with, uh, with a neighboring residence.
What does that mean?
Counsel-
Nothing.
Counselor Aynoni, does that, uh, uh, give you what you're looking for?
Well, I'm not looking for anything. I'm trying to get answers for other people. And I, I mean, we've read their emails, and they're very confused, and they're very, um, let's just say, they're, they're trusting how this process work, works has been rocked. So I want to make sure that all the work they've done leading up to date now, uh, with the assumptions they had that they were going forward based on their communications with staff, are not all lost.
So maybe our planning staff, one of, uh, either Mr. Dick or Mr. Bryce might want to answer-
Through the mayor to the counselor, um, all communication, my understanding, all communication with the applicants have always informed them of the city's plans with respect to employment. Um, what we're trying to do here, as I mentioned before, is to look at a broader study area to do the proper planning. Uh, Oakland's could be residential in the future, but we would like to do the proper planning to put that in place.
A colleague of mine would also like to add.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. I think it's also important to note that the lands are currently zoned industrial that we're looking at, and we're looking at creating an employment land there. So a mix of various business activities that are prestige industrial. So what we're looking to put there to satisfy our employment land needs is currently within the zoning that the lands already are. The cl- the consultants that have come in with particular applications that haven't been deemed to complete at this point are looking for official plan and zoning bylaw amendments. So those applications, once they are complete, would go to council to look for approval or recommendations from that council to move the zoning away from industrial to residential. So what we're looking to do as part of our strategy right now is continue the lands with the zoning that we have, that's industrial, and continue to grow our employment base of the city.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Counselor Aynoni?
Well, I understood that. I just want to make sure that, um, the two people who sent in their letters in regards to concerns on where their development or proposed development may be going, understand what we're doing, and all their time up to now is not lost. So I'm, I'm understanding what staff is telling us. We just have to make that clear to, um, the two entities that sent us in communications.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. I've got, uh, excuse me, Counselor Dubrowski.
Presentation that, um, that we're short, um, employment lands. But we're more, not more importantly, but what we've been talking about around the table for the past year and a half or two years is affordable housing. We have a developer that's been planning for three years, spent a lot of time and resources on, on getting their, um, Ts crossed and their Is dotted. And I would hate to thwart that development with an interim control bylaw. I think there could be a compromise here around the table. What I'd like to see is maybe the, the support of the first two recommendations that I'm fine with. And then in terms of the, the third recommendation, maybe looking at that land, um, east of Stanley and pulling that away from the recommendation, not placing an interim control bylaw in those lands and, and allowing this developer to, um, to create residential and to create affordable housing in the, the form of apartments and townhomes, which they're looking to bring in. Um, and they're also looking to, to bring in, um, retail and commercial within the development, which will not only service the, the neighborhood that they're looking to build, but obviously will service the, the town of Chippewa as well, which is, uh, which is well-needed. So I'd be happy to make that motion, um, would, would love the support around the table on it. But again, um, a lot of time, a lot of resources, a lot of, um, money's been spent by this developer to, to get this in motion, and I would hate to, uh, to stall them any further. And would hope to get the ball rolling.
So, uh, we've got a motion from Counselor Dubrowski that we move the first and second recommendation. But the third one, um, we only allow the interim control bylaw to extend to Stanley, not to go east beyond that. Okay, I understand. Do we have a seconder for that motion?
I'll, I'll second it, but can we-
Just put the, uh, he actually put specific addresses in it as well. So I just want to make sure they're both east of Stanley and not one is west, because isn't the campground?
Uh, the, the campground is west.
So-
And, uh, the, the, um, Golf Course is east. So what they said in their email, that the very least they want to make sure the east side is excluded. And then we'll have to deal with the west side later.
They have two addresses here, 8970 and 9015 Stanley Avenue.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, okay, a second.
Yes, I've got, we got the clerk, uh, just excuse me, folks, Mr. Clerk?
So procedurally, just before you call the vote, uh, I know this isn't a, a public meeting, uh, but we do have one other, uh, speaker on the line, Mr. Jeff Drebin. Uh, Mr. Drebin had requested to speak only to the matter of the interim control bylaw. And since that was on the agenda to pass tonight, uh, I thought it would, it would be acceptable that council, uh, hear him speak up to five minutes. Uh, and again, just in relation to the passing of the interim control bylaw, I think he has many of the same complaints, and it sounds like the way that council is going with this motion, uh, he may be satisfied. But before you actually take the vote, uh, now might be a good time, uh, if council wishes, to listen to his, uh, short presentation.
Well, why don't we do this just before we do that? I know Counselor Thompson wants to comment, and then we can go to Mr. Dreble?
Yeah, I-
Drebin?
Would like to, uh, put, uh, uh, some more information, uh, with that motion. I would like to, this council to be fully informed of all of the, uh, um, employment lands that are being, um, discussed and have the opportunity for the owners to, uh, certainly, uh, put their argument, of course, to the back to us to, uh, make sure we're know everything that is going on here. I really am concerned about how we're moving ahead.
Yep, no, that's great. And Counselor Dubrowski's motion, number two recommendation, covers that, that we have additional stakeholder consultation, and everything comes back here to council. Okay, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the chart that's in, in the report, there's a lot of, um, emails that came in or comments that were at the meetings. And I know that staff has put their response, but I'm wondering if some of those are also still issues? How did we notify people? Like, did we notify everybody in that, in that employment lands that we were looking at? Because the first time we brought it, there were a couple of landowners that came with their addresses, and we excluded them. Then again, today, we, we found a few more. I'm having a feeling that there's probably going to be a lot more. And I'm wondering if, including all of the stakeholders, but make sure that they get notified for that whole area.
So maybe we can ask, uh, Mr. Dick, how we went about notifying the landowners and to ensure that the landowners are all up to date on what we're up to here?
Yes, through the mayor, to the counselor. Uh, through the process, we recorded anyone that has made any sort of, uh, comments through the open house, uh, through the public meeting, through any sort of other, uh, hard copy correspondence or letters to, uh, staff, as well as e-mor- email correspondence. Uh, they've all been collected, and anytime we make any sort of advancements on the strategy, they are notified. Including, uh, this report that went out, we notified all participants by email. And moving forward, any comments that are received as part of, like you see, as part of the appendix, we will respond back to before we bring anything, uh, back to council for, for adoption, uh, later in probably the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Through the mayor, the people that are on this list, are they satisfied with the responses? Or are, do they want to bring this to council that they might like to do- or do they want to bring this to council that they might like to do something like the two letters that we got today, is that going to be the final or are there going to be a whole bunch of people in this chart that would like to try to do something different? Are they satisfied with the answers? Because when I look at the chart, a lot of it is, the city has identified need for additional employment lands to accommodate job forecasts and has sufficient residential land until 2041. Well, if that's the response we give to the landowners, are they finished with that and that's acceptable and we're moving on, or do they feel they want to do something different?
Through the mayor, to the counselor, my view is that that will be the staff's response. Obviously, we'll put this back up as draft amendments and zoning in the new year for additional comments, but in the planning process, it would be difficult to satisfy everyone. In the end, you will probably still have some people that will not be satisfied with the city's direction, but we try our best as staff to balance the needs of the, of the broader public good with the city as well as the residents and landowners.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. I, I would still like to get the word out to landowners so they have an opportunity to comment, because I don't want to come back to the next meeting and then there's more landowners that just heard about it and then they have something. So I, I think it's a little bit premature for us to move forward and exempt a few when we might be exempting more later. I think we really need to go through it and analyze each of them and see what we, we need to do.
Yes. Okay. So also I noticed on the- Oh, I'm sorry. I did notice Kelly Martel, she had her hand up, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that at the time. I know Kelly, did you have something you wanted to add in to the, to the discussion?
No, thank you, through the chair, I believe Angela covered it all. I think that what we just want to be clear on here in staff's recommendation and the work that Adam and Jamie and ourselves have done is that certainly the Planning Act allows anybody to make an application to change the zoning or the official plan permissions on their land for whatever they may request or may desire to do. And through the Planning Act process, that's where staff would provide their evaluation and recommendation on those specific, site-specific applications. And at this stage, as Angela and Brian and Mr. Bryce have said, preconsultations have happened, and at a preconsultation, that doesn't, that's not where a staff decision occurs. That is simply where an applicant will be receiving the information that they would need to make an application. And all this to say, I think the applications are in, and certainly the city staff would have to review them, process them and deem them complete and bring a recommendation forward, but at this stage where we're at in developing our background work and the recommendations in alignment with both what the region of Niagara is doing with their municipal comprehensive review, and what we're trying to, or what the city is trying to achieve with the secondary plan moving forward is to comprehensively plan for these areas. And certainly looking at each individual site where there is an application brought forward by a private, a private development proponent outside of the totality of the whole area through a secondary plan process is something that may not be the most fulsome planning exercise. And I don't know if Brian or Angela, you want to speak a bit more to that. I don't want to step too much out of line in terms of what the process is at the local level, and I'm certainly not well-versed in what you do specifically for your process, but I did just want to identify that. Because an applicant makes an application to change the zoning or the official plan permissions on their land, does not necessarily mean that staff's evaluation of that is going to result in a positive outcome, and that is certainly a risk a developer takes in purchasing land.
Did we lose? Oh, she was done? Okay, I'm going to go to our CAO right now.
Thank you, through the mayor, I just want to direct a question to our planning staff. My concern with the motion on the table from council is that to divide that piece of land, would the remaining land be sufficient enough to actually do an effective secondary plan? And secondly, I think, you know, because this is an issue of existing industrial land that the proponents are looking to move to residential, I believe for us to hit our targets, that would mean that we would have to take other lands that are not currently zoned industrial and then make them employment land, so there'd be a further implication to council on that. So though, you know, and I'm wondering if, if, if planning can clarify those two items, and then a suggestion might be, instead of moving forward with a partial thing, is just to defer all of item number three, and then planning can bring back more information to council to satisfy some of the concerns, but if we can maybe get that answered by our, our planning folks.
You're muted, Mr. Dick?
Yep, through the mayor, to the counselor, to the CAO. If it's council's desire to remove the Oakland's golf course from the interim control bylaw, we can live with that, we will do our best with the secondary plan with the rest, respect of the rest of the lands with Grassy Brook. But the CAO does raise a good point, right now the city is deficient on employment land, and we have sufficient residential land to 2041. The region has indicated that we may, that we are proposed three boundary expansions for additional residential lands from the year 2041 to 2051, but if we were to convert potential employment land to additional residential land, then those boundaries, additional residential lands may not be needed in the future, and the math or the land needs assessment performed by the region may need to be recalibrated. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Counsel Strange and then Inoney?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think the CAO is right, and I think we should pass the first two and defer the third, because we don't even know if there's other properties. We learned today about, you know, a couple developers, but we don't know if there's other properties that, people have no idea that they're in this interim control bylaw. So I don't know if, if Counsel Debroski would like to just defer the, the third one and just-
Wait, would I remove my motion or just?
No, no, just, so one and two, just defer the interim control bylaw, number three.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so you're both good with that? Okay. Counsel Inoney?
No, that's what I was going to say.
Okay, do we, do we have any other comment from council at this point? Any other comment from staff if we were to do, so you understand what we're saying, so the, the motion is to approve one and two, but to defer three, the interim control bylaw?
Yeah, through the mayor, yes, we understand that.
Okay. All right, well then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, you're opposed to?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we gotta do a lot more work on this.
Well, they are, they're deferring the interim control bylaw completely right now. It's being deferred. Okay, so we've got, that's passed, and we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel?
The sound is very bad on my end. So I, people are, conversations are weaving in and out, I just, in the event I ask something somebody just said, it's, it's not a clear connection over here.
Okay, well, we're-
I just wanted you, I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, we're having a few challenges tonight, I'm not sure why, maybe we have to adjust to the seating again now that we've all moved around?
There's a buzzing, there's a buzzing that keeps happening.
Yeah, we heard something earlier.
Yeah, okay, I just want you to know.
I'm sorry, what did he say in the back?
It was in the last 60 seconds or so.
In the last 60 seconds?
Yes.
Oh, it hasn't happened since the last 60 seconds, okay.
Swallow bees have gone.
Yeah. Okay, so, all right, all right, we'll keep an eye on it or an ear on it? Good? Okay, moving on to item 5.2, Downtown BIA, 2022 Budget and Levy. So we're looking for Amanda McDonald, Executive Director of the Downtown BIA.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict.
Yep, okay, conflict by Counsel LaCoco?
Let Vic back in?
Oh, yeah, we should get Vic back in here. Counsel Peter Angelo, can you let, let him know, Counsel LaCoco, thank you? Okay, we'll just wait for just a moment till Counsel Peter Angelo gets in the room. Okay, Amanda, are you there?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, okay, good. So now, do you, do you have a presentation or do we have something to share on the screen?
We do, I provided it to Cindy's staff.
There it goes, okay, it's, speak?
Awesome.
There we go, it's on the, it's on the screen, perfect, we're all good to go.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I am excited today to present our annual report. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors in the Downtown Business Improvement Association. I, I'm not actually in control, so I'll just say switch whenever it's the next slide. Just for the people watching at home tonight, they might be wondering what a BIA is. We are a local board of council and we're operated by our board of management, which is elected from the downtown businesses. We do provide certain business promotions and improvement functions within our geographical catchment of downtown, and we operate off of six mandates. Just so those at home can understand, like where we're located in, in comparison to some of our other fellow City of Niagara Falls BIAs, we are highlighted in blue, we're the historic and authentic downtown, and you can see all of the other BIAs throughout the city are on the map as well. Switch. So these are our six mandates, we have beautification, so that's really all of your banners, your planters, anything that like spruces up the street, the seasonal decorations, our arches and whatnot. And then we also have our revitalization and maintenance, that's a lot of our programs like painting the arches, which we're undertaking, and I know that has been in front of council. Marketing and promotion, so we are, we do all of the marketing and the tourism and the promotion of downtown through our social media accounts, Downtown Niagara Falls. We also have all of our special events, and of course we have our business recruitment, and then we do internal communications amongst members as well, so we do monthly and bimonthly newsletters. Switch. So our board is operated by a board of directors who are members in downtown. We have five committees that work with the board to plan and implement projects throughout the year. I report myself directly to that board, and then I assist the committees, and then underneath and myself, we have BIA staff, so that's just kind of the hierarchy for those at home. Switch. There are some return on investments, the Ontario Business Improvement Association actually published this paper, so BIAs really leverage money for beautification and we create that sense of place for both visitors and our community to come to. We also have intentional economic development, so we contribute to the economic well-being and growth of our community, and then we also support small business. So this is advocating and lobbying through provincial and federal government, and then we have community building. So we create the support for our businesses through our broader community, and we also hold near and dear to us our relationship with our municipality and also their staff as well. Switch. So often OBS says partnerships between municipalities and their local BIAs is one of the most fundamental foundations of success for BIA. Nothing could be truer. For our BIA, the staff at, at the city this year have been overwhelming in their support. I know council has been at numerous of our events and grand openings, so I'm excited to go through that today. Switch. Just so that people at home can see, municipalities really foster that well-being of individuals, the well-being of the community, well, we foster businesses that actually attract residents and tourists and employers to come to our city and create more of a gathering space and also economic opportunities for those people who live within the city. Switch. So every year we're, and sorry, I'm trying to keep, because I know you guys have a long night, five minutes, so I'm trying to keep up pace here. We put out a survey every year now, and we looked to, for three things in that survey. We wanted to determine how the Niagara Falls downtown is doing. We gather ideas for how we can position our downtown in the future, which you're going to see tonight in our strategic plan, and we also use that information to align with members' expectations of our efforts. Switch. So there are two surveys that are put out, one is for business owners and one is for residents. Our business owner survey this year had 57 applications when I looked last, or submissions last night when I looked, it was 52 last year. Our residential survey, I can't remember what the numbers were, but I believe it was over 800 when we concluded, so we had a pretty good sample population for the residents, we had an excellent sample population for inferential statistics for the business owners and for the property owners in downtown. Switch. So for our first category mandate was beautification, we saw a significant increase. Now, we did survey members at the midway point through 2020, we hadn't done a lot because of the pandemic and the shutdowns, so the, most of the information was based on 2019. We, what we reported to you at council last year was a C minus, that grade has significantly improved to a B plus. Both surveys did suggest that we focus on seasonal decor and winter lights and all of the things that you're seeing on the street right now, the string lights and the beautiful Christmas banners and our veteran banners and everything throughout the year. Now, it is important to note that this survey was in June, so this survey, June, July and August, they had not seen the seasonal decor, but that's been put up on the street. We did a lot of other things, like we improved and assessed our, our flowers and whatnot, which I'm going to actually talk about in the next slide, so if you could switch. So we had a lot of successes, we increased our winter lights and decorations in downtown. I'm going to talk about grants later on in the presentation, but we received significant funding through both the provincial and the federal government. One of our shipping containers is actually, well, I shouldn't say shipping container, one of our suppliers is in Vancouver right now, so they were not able to deliver our second batch of lights. That only means that we can improve for next year, so we're super excited about that. We decorated all of our trees in downtown, we put up 56 veteran banners this year in conjunction and collaboration with the Legion, and we're super excited about that. We had 60 winter banners hung, and we're actually going to be hanging banners for the Summer Games. Ramondo and Associates in downtown actually created the Summer Games facility at Brock, so we're super excited about that and supporting our local business that contributed to a national game. We also installed downtown gates within, for an event area, which was a pilot, we had wall murals, we increased our boullards, and there's just, there's so much for beautification, and we're just very proud of it. But what we're going to do for the future is we're focusing on wall murals, our gateway signage, and we are still going for the projection mapping, we have submitted two major grants through the federal government, we're waiting for word on whether or not we receive that. And then, of course, we've submitted grants through some tourism agencies for gates along the rest of the street so that we can easier close down the road in the future. Revitalization and maintenance, our number one project is security cameras, the project is nearing completion, it is not up right now, but we are expecting it to be up within the next 30 to 45 days, with the exception, not counting in the Christmas holidays in there. We're very excited about this initiative, and we've partnered with other local organizations, task force, talking about homelessness, although homelessness is not our core mandate and is not something that we address, we do support those agencies in addressing the problem by writing letters of support and helping with any in-kind resources that we may be able to assist with. So marketing and promotion, this is something that we, we knew that we were lacking in before and we're really proud of this year. We received a $42,000 grant to assist members in applying for $2,500 grants through Digital Main Street. We had 37 applications, so 37 that were approved and successful, so 37, 37 times by 2,500, that was awesome. And those two staff people throughout the year, they also assisted our members in teaching webinars and seminars on social media and engagement. We also received a $35,000 Christmas marketing through OCAF, and we were able to be put in the National Post, we had ads on the TTC, we had television ads, billboards, radio, like you name it, we did it, and it's definitely showing this year. We produced a new website and our videos were one of some of our highest engagements on social media. Switch, please. I'm not going to recap the successes, but I will point out that we did a path program, and this year, instead of hiring out for our services, we actually hired staff through wage grants and whatnot through the swap program through the federal government. So we were actually able to offer our businesses professional photography and video services, and those are the commercials that you're seeing online. Typically, those commercials cost about $1,000 for every 60 seconds, and we, I can't remember how many in the AGM report that's in front of you, but we produced quite a bit, I believe it's over 30. So what are we doing in 2022? So we're focusing on a communication and social media strategy at the- So what are we doing in 2022? So we're focusing on a communication and social media strategy at this moment. We're talking about increased marketing from the tourism sector. That's partnerships through Winter Festival Lights, Niagara Tourism, and reaching out to the hotels. We're also investigating online gift card programs and Visa, Mastercard. And we're talking about more commercials and increased, and as I said, increased promotion through the hotels, and we're with a focus on the bus and train station. Just to give you an example, we, we are reaching almost 150,000 people per month on our Facebook. Our post engagement is up significantly. We have increased our follower count by over 1,000%. Our one, and I talked earlier about how BIAs create this sense of community and it's not, to bring the citizens of Niagara Falls into our downtown. One great example of that is this veteran here on the left. We posted about him, and it went a little bit mini-viral, but we had about 2,100 likes on this post thanking him for his service. On Instagram alone, we see almost 50,000 people per month interacting with our, with our stuff, and this is not paid. This is earned media. So this is very important that our staff team is doing incredible work through content creation and graphic design, and they're really doing amazing work. We also had this post go viral. We had over 120,000 people viewing this one post about some of the assets that we purchased for our market. So we're very excited that we are now exploring reaching not only our citizens, but also the people who visit our city every year. Switch, please. Communication. So another one of our mandates is we actually, we, we hold our committees, but we also communicate with our members through monthly and bimonthly newsletters. We've sent over seventy pieces of communication out via email. We also hand-deliver, and we mail out to our property owners who don't necessarily live or are active within the Niagara Falls community other than owning property. But we make sure that we reach them as well. We make sure that we have a text messaging service as well. So if you're a business or you're a tourist, you can actually text our number and receive regular updates as well. So not only do we have our newsletter, our social media, our website, and text messaging service, all, all to help people with internal communications about BI activities. Switch, please. Special events. So this one's a little bit hard because the Christmas market hadn't happened for year two when we were assessing this, so I'm, I'm wondering what the outcome will be next year. I'm very excited to see that. But residents suggested more specialty events while businesses requested frequent events or activations. This is very similar from year to year, but you can see that increase happening as well. The Niagara Falls Christmas market is the most requested event that we have on our schedule. Switch, please. Successes in 2021. Everything we did. We really want to thank the downtown members that helped us and assisted us in operating some of these events. Cat and Monkey in downtown basically held all of our Halloween events. We helped with road closures and insurance and, and all the applications necessary and in-kind resources like tables. We also did drag shows and Fruity Fridays. We purchased this year a movie screen and projector, so we're very proud that we can now host those free at charge in the future with the exception of staff time. We did weekly summer concerts, cruising on the queue. While it's not hosted by the BI, we do assist with the road closure application. Crazy Macaws Bike Night is hosted by Crazy Macaws Cafe. They, while they operate this event, the BI does assist with insurance, road closures, and also in-kind for all tables and whatnot, which is valued at about 15,000. So we do assist them with in-kind resources. We were very proud of our Santa Claus parade. Thank you for entrusting us with that this year, and we're super excited for next year. We did things like giant games and chess boards and pianos downtown. And we assisted with the Summer Canada Day, so 2021. And we're excited to do everything above, plus 2022 Canada Day and assisting with whoever replaces Lori Alvene's. Switch. Business recruitment. So we had, I guess, you know what, I don't want to spoil it because it's on another slide, but we had a lot of things going on this year, and we appreciate Jim. He did a lot of walking up and down our street doing openings. Re-Store Stores was the number one suggestion on both surveys. We opened numerous of those in 2021, so we're very proud. We're intentionally going out and seeking businesses to open in our downtown, and we're trying to figure out what's going to work with each block. So we're, we're actually being very intentional in who we're going to recruit. We did hold a win this space competition. We had over thirty applications. It was a tie, so we had two opens, openings, and we had one who was actually in the competition, got to the final four, and he opened up a shop elsewhere in Niagara Falls. So that's just showing the trickle-down effect of the win this space competition and the BI activities and programs. We, of course, are working diligently with our enterprise center. We really want to thank Dean, who is on our board, and Angela. They've been working with us to create an investment package the staff is creating here at the BI for February 22 launch. And of course, we've done social media and business fundamentals and webinars and everything with our staff. And we understand that a lot of our activities are geared towards our businesses. We want to make sure that we're benefiting property owners as well. So we've created real estate sections on our website. We're directing people to those stores or to those owners to fill them as well. And we are in regular contact with property owners to make sure that we're getting a great mix of businesses in downtown. And then, of course, we have our job board. We filled, I believe, three employments in downtown that those three employees are still working in downtown. We're excited about that. It's just a very small thing that we're able to contribute. Switch, please. So as I said before, these are all of the brand-new businesses in downtown this year. We have four more opening now, but with grand openings in 2022, which we're excited to announce. We don't know if they're ready, so I don't really want to say their names. But you can start to see some of these awesome stores, and I encourage you to come down and visit. Switch, please. One of the great successes of the BI is our ability to leverage grants this year. So we have an increased staff team, which allows us to apply for grants. When we apply for grants, they often ask us, who is your staff team? Who will be implementing? Do you have capacity? And do you have the foundational budget for it? We would like to thank the downtown members and also council. That budget has allowed us to raise an additional $639,250 on top of our levy in 2021. There are several large and extensive grants that are, we're waiting for the outcome of those. So we don't know if those numbers will be final. We did hear about a grant just in the last couple of days, so the AGM report in front of you may look a little bit different. We received a $240,000 grant. We are not able to tell the public just yet which level of government has given it to us, as they are, they are going to announce it themselves, and I'm sure that level of government would like to hold a press release. So we're just holding back on announcing that information, but we can state that we received $240,000 in the last couple of days. We're very excited. All of these go towards projects and implementation of those projects. Switch, please. So we're here tonight because we're presenting our budget. I just wanted to walk you through kind of how that budget came to be. The budget process is about six months long for our members and our board. The survey starts to get created and approved by our committees and our board in May. And then in June, the survey actually goes out to the members. This is through various forums. Not only is it announced on social media and email through Blasts, but we also hand-deliver all of these notifications as well. In July and August, these committees meet multiple times to review the membership input and all of the surveys. And then at the start of September, the committees draft their budget request, and then they send them to the finance and audit. Finance and audit meets, and they form, they take all of those budgets from all of those committees, and they put them together. And they say, like, is this realistic? Can we do this? What is our capacity? And we, we kind of meld it all together. It goes to the board to make adjustments and approves that, that budget to go to the AGM. It goes to the AGM for discussion, and then the board meets at the end of November. If there's any presentations to the board, if there's any emails, everything is considered, and then the board sends it to you, council, in December. So we are looking for a levy of $406,604. That levy just includes a raise for COLA, so cost of living for those out there who don't know what that means. And then our total budget, because we have confirmed student grants and HST, everything's kind of mixed in there, at 185. So you'll see our expenses there as well. And switch, please. And finally, we're really excited. It should be in your council package, but we created a strategic plan. A lot of the things that we, I just went over, are operational pieces. But we do have some really amazing visions for what we want in the future, and I do suggest that you flip through it. It's also online for anybody at home. We have it broken into our six mandates. And then it's also talking about the initiatives, broken down, and our objectives, and, and really how we want to get there. A full, more extensive, extensive version will be released in early 2022. And that's it. Thank you. And is there any other questions?
Thank you very much, Amanda. That's pretty amazing. It's, it's so nice to see a business improvement area being run like a business. And I have to say, I've never seen the downtown so vibrant and alive ever. I mean, it's amazing, from the parades to all the festivals, the way it looks right now, the market, it's amazing. There's such buzz around it. So I've got Counselor Dubrowski, and then Counselor Strange.
Thanks through you to Ms. McDonald. Great presentation. Just right off the bat, I was a member of the BI years ago as a resident, and it's grown leaps and bounds. There's no surprise that anyone around this horseshoe or watching at home, if anyone's watching at home, that's downtown has had its struggles for, for years and years, but want to congratulate Amanda and the board for working so diligently and just in terms of, I'm hearing about grants and the social media branding and campaigns. Security cameras, I know, were an issue that was talked about probably seven or eight years ago. So there's a lot of things that have happened in the last year or two. And to remind everybody around the table, we were in a pandemic. We still are post-pandemic, but for the BI to, I mean, roll out so many great strategies and initiatives, it's impressive. So Amanda, to you, a big congratulations and to your staff. I know it takes a huge team of, not only an executive director, but a full staff and probably hundreds of volunteers, I would imagine, just in terms of helping at the Christmas market. So a big congratulations to everyone, and I know Counselor Strange had his hand up, but I did want to make a motion to support the budget and a motion for council to approve it. I'll leave that on the table, and I'll, I'll let Counselor Strange take over from there.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Amanda, for the presentation. And man, downtown has really gone a long way in the last year and, especially in the middle of a pandemic and near the end of the pandemic, that Christmas parade was just unreal. It was thousands and thousands. It reminded me of the old Blossom Festival parade on the road, just thousands of people coming in, and it seems like people are recognizing.
Sorry. You have to start over again. We didn't catch any.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to congratulate Amanda for, for the last year and a bit. And I was saying that, you know, we were in the middle of a pandemic, close to the end of the pandemic, and it's still going, really. And we saw a Christmas parade where there were thousands and thousands. I'd never seen that many. It reminded me of the old days, back when Counselor Thompson was mayor, when we had the Blossom Festival Parade. It was, you know, people coming from everywhere in the states, and it's, it's starting to be like that again. And we saw so many people out there, and I could not believe it, especially in the environment we are in right now, and people are coming out miles. It seems like people are recognizing where downtown is now. And it's been years where I think people, it's like, oh, you know, people come in from Quebec, wherever, and they always think downtown is Clifton Hill. You know, we've got a big games coming up, Canada Summer Games 2022 in August. And I, I think, you know, people are going to recognize, we're going to have so many people down here because they're staying in the hotels, but they're going to be coming downtown, in our real downtown Niagara Falls now. We've got the closed gates, we've got the walking streets, and it's going to remind me of, of Europe. And, you know, it's, it's going to be a great summer, I believe, for, for downtown and especially the Christmas market. Actually, I had four couples that were at the Nickel Fannell Celebration of Life. They actually, after, they went to the Christmas market, and they're like, Mike, when did this ever happen? This is unreal. We've never seen downtown like that. So kudos to you, Amanda, and, and everyone behind you and staff for, for, you're doing just such a great job, and in particular with the grants. I saw that $240,000 grants. We'll be looking for that, and just keep up the great work.
Thank you so much.
So did you want to make that, oh, I did have a question just before you do. Amanda, what about now, I don't know if you, if you mentioned, I apologize if I missed it. An update or Counselor Dubrowski on the Sparkle Awards? And as well, and then I guess I'll ask Amanda about the Erica, I'm not sure how to say her last name, Casapanan? Casapanan, the viewing party for the Survivor Series? So I didn't know if, maybe you could tell us about Sparkle, and Amanda might be able to tell us about Survivor.
I spoke, prior to the council meeting, I spoke to Amanda. I was going to bring up the Sparkle Awards.
Under New Business? Okay, great. Okay, my apologies.
And it's not the Survivor Series, which is a great WWE pay-per-view, but it's Survivor.
Oh, Survivor, I'm sorry, okay.
Just to confuse all the wrestling fans at home.
All right. See, shows you what I know. So I'm just saying that they've got a number of other things up and coming, not just what we talked about. So just to be, so we've got the motion by Counselor Dubrowski, second by Counselor Strange. Okay, Counselor Iannoni. Counselor Iannoni.
We have letters of objection, and we have a speaker speaking to the letters of objection. I think we should hear them before we call a motion.
Yep, we've got, we do, we have one speaker, so we can ask the, the one speaker to speak.
And, and also, I want to highlight, you know, we just talked about an application, and we talked about the importance of two letters from owner, business owners or developers who were, who had sent complaints into council. We have dozens of letters that have come into us, and I want to make sure that that's on the record also. That presentation sounded lovely, but the membership does not exactly feel like that, and I think we need to give the membership an equal and, and fair opportunity to speak to how they believe things are going.
Yeah, well, fair enough. Some of the membership. A lot of the membership are quite happy.
So, okay, so you, you just corrected me, and that's not exactly the case.
Well, you said the membership are not happy, and that's not the full, that's not exactly right.
You have dozens of letters from the membership, and you haven't even heard the presenter speak. So I, I think you need to have both sides of the story before you entertain motions and call motions.
Well, Counselor, we did read the letters, so I think we got a good feel, but we'll definitely hear from the speaker. Yes, Counselor Dubrowski?
And maybe just to that point, is Ms. McDonald still on the line?
Ms. McDonald, are you still there, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, she's still there.
Just to Counsel, to Counselor Iannoni's, I think it's a request, the letters, maybe the executive director could chime in as well before the speaker.
So we've got some letters of protest, Ms. McDonald, to, to council, so I didn't know if you wanted to address the letters.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. I'm very disappointed that there's not a board member here to speak with Amanda, to speak adjacent to Amanda, and the complaints that went in went into the board and to council members, not to the staff. Does she have anybody there who could speak for the board?
I am the sole presenter tonight.
Yeah, sorry, Counselor Iannoni, I was asking Ms. McDonald, who is on the phone, just if she had any input regarding the letters.
I do, I do understand that, Counselor Dubrowski, but the letters were not to Ms. McDonald. The letters were to the board members and to council.
So you, so you don't want her to respond? So you don't want her to respond, Counselor Iannoni? Sorry.
I don't think she should be responding. She is the executive director.
I'll, I'll leave it at that then. Thank you.
Counselor Dubrowski asked her to respond. He can ask her to respond. It's his call. That's your choice. However you want to handle that, Counselor Dubrowski.
I mean, here we have a presentation, which, for the most part, I think around the table was well-received. And you had a concern, and we have the person that just presented the outline here to answer any questions you might have. I, I think we should give her the floor, and Counselor Iannoni has a couple of questions, and let's see if the executive director can offer some insight.
So what we'll start off, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to tell you what we're going to do. We're going to start by asking Ms. McDonald to respond to the query, and then we're going to get Ms. Sasha Hillig, Hillig to speak, and then we can have follow-up dialogue. So Ms. McDonald, did you want to respond to the letters that we've received from some of the members in the downtown who are not supportive of what's going on?
Absolutely. I certainly don't mind answering, council. While I haven't had the chance to read the updated council agenda and validate any petitions or whatnot, I am aware of a falsehood on one of the petitions circulated in October and November, which did note that property tax increase in addition to the BIA levy. So I, which, the BIA does not control property tax. So I'm unaware of how many of the members who have sent in these petitions originally signed because of the BIA or the property tax. So, and of course, we work with our downtown members. If they feel misrepresented, they can seek election or follow guidelines and procedures to overturn, which is outlined in all of our documents. But we would love to discuss with them at another board meeting, which is actually happening on December 13th.
Okay, thank you for that. Is Sasha Heilig, is Sasha on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Thank you. Welcome to the, to the meeting.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and counselors. Thanks, Amanda, for that presentation. I think all of us can agree with a lot of the initiatives the board is trying to take here for creating a nicer, more enjoyable downtown. Personally, I liked some of the initiatives. I enjoyed the presentation. I do have a question about it. I'd like to just quickly state, and that's, the first survey that went out in 2020 did not have input from general public. So I feel the results of the survey you've seen are showing large increase in numbers and participation due to the fact that it was given to 2020, or given to the public and not just the board. So I think that should be taken into consideration. But as I go on, I'd like to know why the sitting board continues to ignore memberships, questions, and concerns about the levy when they're what makes up the authentic downtown. We currently have a sitting board that chooses to mute, silence members, or even deny access to general meetings altogether. We have a chairman who's in charge of mandating this strategic plan for the following year, and he has been making constant statements that he can't wait to get off of this board and doesn't want to be involved any longer. So I don't understand how we can invest more money into something with a broken foundation. I know there is many, you know, we're all happy to see a long-term strategic plan, but I assure you, we didn't reach it in any fair way. Most of membership is weary about the investments made by this board, and this statement is made in confidence through past actions and decisions made by the executive committee and the director. So alongside this are question morals and complaints of integrity against the two counselors that sit on our current board, Campbell and Dubrowski. Answers are not given when asked. When asking something to be transparent, FOI requests are sent to membership along with exuberant fees. Our chairman has allowed the executive director to answer all emails on his behalf and signing off on him. This board does not account for any of their past actions, and I don't understand how we can vote for a levy increase without financial audits and notes based on the 2021 year even being brought forward to review. Many businesses downtown claimed loss of revenue after last year's nearly permanent road closure, the promenade. When this was brought to the executive committees and the executive director's attention, membership was advised to put in a delegation request, which then they were cut off after their five-minute talk. Essentially, they were told to hold their concerns for their livelihoods and accountability if investments to when it's, for their investments to when it's convenient for the board to acknowledge them. This is not right. This is not fair. The board is taking risks at the cost of people's livelihoods. And if this levy goes through, it shows that counselors are in support of all those statements. The BIA has never behaved this way before. This is new. And the constant response that received from the board and the pushback on membership that they're receiving is that we need to take place in committee meetings. And you know what? This does not work. We are busy. We can't make it to these meetings all the time. And additionally, we have reports from several ex-committee and board members who have been involved and were unable to contribute because when their, their questions, when they have questions, the board refuses to answer them, and they don't get answers, or they're told they no longer need their input on the board. So it's, I kind of see how this is going here. And at the end of the day, if we wish to attend a general meeting, we should be allowed to vote on such matters that may have been structured through committees, and we are not allowed. So I don't understand how we can attend a board meeting and still not have a say. The most troubling realization is our recent knowledge of internal bylaws being passed without membership knowledge. And these bylaws removed all power for membership to give input on decisions towards the levy, the constitution, the boundaries, and the structure of this board. This is complete lack of transparency, integrity, and accountability, and has created a huge problem for downtown. The membership did not vote for the levy to be increased in 2021, and it certainly is not voting for the levy to be increased now. This board is clearly in place to run this downtown improvement jurisdiction the way they choose without membership input. And this has become very clear in the way counselors Dubrowski and Campbell have mitigated this claims. Minutes were not reported to membership for 10 months. In that time, bylaws were passed, taking away every right we had. A constitution was passed forward that was not made public to membership for six months past its amendment. And a levy was increased 86% during a pandemic without membership input. Counselor Dubrowski and Campbell were present of all of these.
Ms. Heilig, you've got about, you've got about 10 seconds to go, Ms. Heilig. You've got about 10 seconds.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know why the municipality act can be interpreted in many ways, and why these counselors refuse to answer membership emails. I'd like to know why the city clerk does not answer membership emails. And I'd like to know why the executive director quotes Bill Matson in general meetings when quoting the municipal act. I think these are very important questions, and it seems very biased to me who the council is working for, and that they forgot they're working for everyone.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll try to get some answers. First up, I've got Counselor Dubrowski.
Just for the sake of clarity and transparency, and Counselor Inonie mentioned there's a lot of members that are unhappy on the street. To Ms. Heilig, which property do you own on Queen Street, or do you rent property on Queen Street? I'm just wondering why you're the voice right now of Queen Street.
Thanks, Chris. I'm glad you asked. I was a property owner for about five years and a renter for another year after that. Currently, I do not own a property. The reason I don't is because of these issues. And I have every right to be asking these questions and getting answers, because these issues are what affected my decision to leave Queen Street. And I paid that money last year, and I paid your wage.
Sorry? Okay, so just back to my original question. Do you currently own property on the street or rent? And I'm just asking.
No, but I'm, I am very invested in Queen Street.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. Maybe we'll go to our clerk, if we could just ask, in regard to some of the questions regarding the municipal act and where your name was referenced in some of the BIA meetings, and maybe your interpretation of things, Bill, the way they're running things in the downtown versus how maybe they were in the past?
Thank you, Your Worship. I've been asked to comment a few times with the downtown BIA. They are a separate entity. They are a board that reports to this council. In reference to the municipal act, currently, the downtown BIA is following the municipal act when it comes to approving their budget. The Section 205 of the municipal act talks about BIAs and the budgeting process, and it does state that a board of management shall prepare a proposed budget for each fiscal year, and shall hold one or more meetings of the members of the improvement area for discussion of the proposed budget. And I believe I did see in Angela's presentation that that did take place earlier this year. The constitution was adopted through the BIA, as mentioned by the speaker just a moment ago, and that came to council one year ago, in December of 2020, and it was approved by this council. So administratively, when it comes to my involvement with the downtown BIA, it's not my role to oversee their operations. But when it comes to the municipal act, in my opinion, I have not seen any cause for alarm.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Clerk. I've got Counselor Inonie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Matson just referred to the part of the municipal act that the executive director says she presented to the board, and the board passed in regard to the membership not voting. That, there is nowhere in the municipal act that prevents the memberships, the membership of the BIA from voting. When I contacted Municipal Affairs and Housing, they said that that clause in the municipal act is to ensure that membership has an input in creating the budget, but it does not exclude them from voting. So it's, at the end of the day, it comes down to the membership. And you have a petition today with 32 names, not just a few, Mr. Mayor, 32. And all they want to do is have the chance to vote on where their money is going. And I don't think that's outrageous for any business to request. There is nothing in the act or our policies that prevent that membership from voting. And all that board has to do is to allow the membership to do so. I have a question for Sasha, if I can through you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
Yep, we're listening.
Through you to Sasha. Sasha, you spoke about not being told or not receiving any documentation that's your, what was the word, constitution or bylaws were being changed. Did the membership not know that those changes were going to happen in order to supposedly properly exclude the membership from voting?
So I can attest that there was no public information being made to membership about the internal bylaws being passed. I think the municipal act can be interpreted in many ways. And from my understanding, in most cases, I thought bylaws, internal ones being passed that affect levy-paying members should be, they should receive notice of it. And we never did. The bylaws are what took all of our votes away. And then therefore, when the constitution came, come to change a couple months later, I do believe membership gave, I'm sorry, I do believe the board gave membership proper acknowledgement or proper whatever of the constitution going to be voted on. But essentially, what does it matter? We didn't have a vote. It was taken from us three months before, when internal bylaws were passed, and they never disclosed that to membership. Actually, Chris Dubrowski was at both of those meetings. It was September 27th and, or September 29th and October 27th of 2020. And Counselor Wayne Campbell was at the latter meeting, and he's the one who put down that, that the internal bylaws have passed. So I also want to put on record that during this time, we did not have a website. The executive director used to claim, whether she does now, that she uploaded minutes to the website. They were made available to membership. We did not have a working website from June 2020 until May 21. That's 10 months where minutes were not reported to membership in the one spot they always used to look for it. So how does membership see that these internal bylaws are being passed if we have nowhere to look for them? The board did not hand-deliver anything about constitutional changes when I resided in the year of 2020 at 4729 Queen Street. That did not happen. And I cannot speak if that happened this year, but when that statement was made just now, I got some texts and messages from people saying they never received a hand-delivered message of that. So I'm having a hard time finding where the board's taking responsibility here for the past actions. And I'm hoping for some answers, because all of our rights were taken away.
Okay, so first I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Amanda if she wants to address any of those comments that were just made, and then I'm going to ask her CIO to weigh in as well. And then we're going to call the vote. So Amanda, did you want to address any of these comments that were just made by Sasha Heilig?
Sure. I'll be very precise and succinct with my answer, just because at this point, there's so much, there's so many mistruths in that, that whole presentation, that I believe the board is going to be looking into legal action. So I'm not, I'm actually not going to offer too much, other than I provided Sasha last winter with a complete breakdown of all of the times that membership was contacted with proof and full screenshots of every email, and also the dates and times of when things were hand-delivered, including letters with a full timeline. And I know our city clerk was, was also seat on that. But we have done everything administratively correct, and I don't wish to speak any further for the board.
Thank you for that. I'm going to ask Jason, our CIO, if he would maybe give us a little bit of an overview from the corporation's perspective.
You know, I think this council wants our BIAs to perform well. And the challenge with the BIA relationship and city council, city council only has so much authority over a BIA, as the clerk had said, the BIA is an independent organization. It has a constitution that was approved by this council. I believe inside that constitution, if members want to make changes to how the BIA operates, there's mechanisms within that constitution for them to undertake those changes. It's difficult for this council to, on its own, force any changes to an independent organization. And, you know, if there's any consideration for this council to override a decision from that BIA, you know, my advice to council would be to seek legal advice, because I'm not sure how compliant you would be in that, and you would take on some risk. And to force any changes without the BIA having the first opportunity to use their own tools and mechanisms inside their constitution to make the changes where it first should take place. So, you know, I can understand the frustration of the members, but the role of this council and its obligations are pretty limited under the act when you have an actual functioning BIA.
Thank you for that, Mr. CIO. Yes, Ms., Counselor Inonie?
Mr. Mayor, I know that there are members, members of the membership that actually would like to see us defer this. We, we didn't just receive these 32 names on a petition. Now, we've heard from the gentleman who owns the former Hatch Building. He's opposed to these levy increases. I'm just going to name certain names.
Counselor, you can't speak for other people. If they're not here, they speak for themselves. So if you want to do a motion for...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking on the emails we received as council members.
Okay, but we've already got them all. You don't need to let us know. We've read everything. So we're making a decision now based on what's in front of us.
Yeah, but I'm allowed to, I'm allowed to speak.
We don't need you to...
I got, I got these letters as a counselor.
Yeah, we all did, and we all read them. So we don't need you to reread them.
That's great. So, so I'm going to make my comments now. You have, you have every major successful business, the anchors, both at the end with TAPS and at the end with Hatch, who are not in support of this levy increase. So the businesses that have managed to squeak out a living and continue to stay there through the pandemic, and who have business coming back are telling us, and this is what they told us at the, said at the AGM, they cannot afford this increase. They couldn't afford last year's increase, and they can't afford this year's increase. So it doesn't matter whether administratively the clerk says, and I disagree with him, that that subsection of the municipal act says that the board can vote without membership. I've never heard that in any BIA, any BIA that we deal with. I've sat on almost all of them, and nobody, nowhere did the board make a decision for the membership where the membership couldn't vote. They would, those other boards would never have that or let that happen. So I'm going to ask, I'm, first of all, they would like a deferral, because they, Phil Ritchie had said at the AGM that at one point, they were being, the budget was being approved in the February. And that's true, Mr. Mayor, because you and I sat on it at the time when the budgets were being approved in February. And they would like an opportunity to have a meeting with the board and say, look, we would, we, we want to be able to vote on this budget. And I will tell you, at the AGM, the membership didn't even vote to accept the report. The membership voted against accepting the report that the board had, and did not feel that they were being heard. And they hoped that they would be heard here. I think it's got to be a terrible thing when, as a business owner, you're sitting and depending on seven people, eight people, because Lori's out, eight people to decide the future of your business, or whether you can afford to continue maintaining your business. So if, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the budget so that the BIA membership has a chance to meet with the board again and bring it back in February.
Okay, so you're bringing forward a motion for deferral. Do we have a second or for motion for deferral? Is there a motion for deferral second? Is there a motion for deferral second? Okay, Counselor, there's no second for motion for deferral.
Then I'd like a recorded vote, please.
All right, so we've got a vote, Mr. Clerk, moved by...
No, no, I would like a recorded vote on the motion that gets a second.
There's no, what do you mean? For what are you talking about?
Did somebody second Dubrowski's, Ms. Councillor Dubrowski's motion?
Yeah, we've got that one seconded, yeah.
Who was it?
It was Councillor Strange.
Okay, thank you. I had a recorded vote, please.
Yes, Councillor, Councillor Thompson.
I've been involved in BIAs for years and I've not seen this as the worst situation I've ever seen. I think our request here should be to get together with the people who are unhappy and the board and bring them together and help them get back on track. I think that's a positive situation. This isn't going to go away in a hurry.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we've got a motion by Councillor Dubrowski, seconded by Councillor Strange, that we receive the presentation and approve the BIA budget and levy. Recorded vote request?
Yes, Councillor Campbell.
Approved.
Councillor Dubrowski.
For.
Councillor Iannoni.
Opposed.
Councillor Curio is absent. Councillor Lococo is absent for the purpose of this discussion as she has declared a conflict. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Aye.
Councillor Strange.
For.
Councillor Thompson.
For.
And Mayor Diodati.
In favor.
And that carries.
All right, thank you for that. Moving along, we have the Budget Engagement Results. Our CAO, Mr. Burgess, along with Dale Morton, Manager of Communications and Corporate Issues, will present the survey results to council.
Can you just bring that to Council back?
And we will, yeah, if we can ask Councillor Lococo to come in as well to join us.
I'll just set up the, Ms. Morton will be giving the presentation. But one of the things I like to do with budgets is to do pre-budget consultation. I know I arrived late in the process, but we were able to do a survey. This municipality has previously done some surveys in the past on budget items, but not in the recent past. But as will be explained in the presentation, we did go out, we did survey a few, we did ask a few questions, a quick survey for residents. They were fairly probing questions. We got a pretty good response. The only thing I'll remind councils, this is not a scientific survey. So you can't, you know, there's no assurances on the accuracy of the survey. But I've run these surveys in a number of communities and the results are, you know, don't always differ that much from other communities. So I thought the results were were pretty good and pretty telling for this community. So I'll let Dale take over and run through the presentation that we have.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Burgess, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm pleased to summarize the public engagement on the two thousand and twenty-two budget and share the results of the public feedback survey that we conducted. And Heather's going to be sharing the screen for me. Thank you. Our budget engagement took place on Let's Talk Niagara Falls, the city's engagement platform, from October first to the twenty-ninth, but the page is still available for people to view. It has lots of great information on it and it includes informative budget process videos, visual boards that included where my taxes go, a summary of how OLG's funds are spent, the city's outstanding debt, operating capital expenses by department, household tax and utility residential changes in comparison with municipalities across the region, property tax calculator, opportunities to ask questions of staff, and of course, the survey that we had to gain feedback on the elements of the budget process. Next, please. We use social media to post the public engagement updates on the corporate channels across Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram over a four-week period, encouraging residents and property owners to have their say on the budget process and to learn more about our budget. Combined, we achieved twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three organic impressions. And next, thank you. We also ran two paid Facebook advertising campaigns in October targeting adults in Niagara Falls. Next. We updated our Let's Talk Budget and Taxes video from two thousand and eighteen and produced two new videos in-house with, you can see the number of views they received there. The two were Niagara Falls in about a minute and one was on user fees, the other was on infrastructure gap. And they started our own manager of capital accounting, James Dowling. We also featured an impact video on how your property tax is calculated on the same page. Next. Our budget engagement campaign was also featured on the corporate website, e-newsletters, and sent to eight, over eight thousand email subscribers. So it was a great opportunity to educate the public on the budget. We also had displays in city facilities and on the Millennium clock. And there was a video loop before the council meeting started telling people about the budget process. Advertisements were placed in the Niagara Falls Review and in Niagara this week and thirty-second commercials ran on one oh one point one and one oh one point, one oh five point one. So just briefly, that summarizes our two thousand and twenty-two budget engagement promotional campaign. It was quite comprehensive, given that the time that was allotted and the COVID restrictions that were in place, not allowing us to get out face-to-face with the public. We plan on building on that information that we provided and opportunities for engagement in two thousand and twenty-three in that planning process for that budget, in two thousand and twenty-two for the two thousand and twenty-three budget, rather. And next, I'll quickly share the survey results. Next, please. The first question we asked was, how should Niagara Falls set its property tax rates? Respondents, respondents were asked to rank the options from one to four, with one being the most preferred way to set the rate. And as you can see from the first three bars, the options are very closely ranked. Next, please. The observations on that one, adding new services was the lowest rated priority. However, maintaining existing services, service levels had the highest score and there was a clear expression to keep the taxes low. The takeaway is that we should focus on maintaining services and avoid cuts while keeping taxes low. We asked two questions about user fees, and the first was on user fee support. And we asked what level of support should be provided by the user and/or the general property taxpayer for services provided through user fees. The option receiving the lowest support was that we should, that there should be no user fees at all. And the one that received the most support was the user of the survey should pay fifty percent of the cost and the general property taxpayer fifty percent of the cost. Next. The second user fee question was about user fee discounts based on age or economic needs. We asked, do you think Niagara Falls should consider reviewing their user fee discounts to only consider economic factors or the ability to pay and not age factors? As you can see, the results were pretty much split on this issue. Next. The observations or takeaways on user fees basically were that more than seventy percent believed that user fees should cover fifty percent or more of the cost of services. There was mixed feelings on how user fees are charged. And the takeaways are that we have room to increase user fees and staff will further review different ways to support economically disadvantaged users. The next question was about the infrastructure gap. And we asked, what strategy should the city consider in tackling the multimillion-dollar infrastructure shortfall each year? Fifty-three percent supported changing, or sorry, charging whatever it takes to keep our core assets in good condition and work on a plan to gradually narrow the gap on non-core assets. The observation here is that a clear majority want to ensure our core assets are maintained and will pay for that, but not for core assets, sorry, but for for non-core assets, they'll be willing to take a more gradual approach. The takeaway here is that we want to consider strategies to narrow the infrastructure gap, including a dedicated infrastructure tax to address core assets. Thanks. On interest charges, we asked, how should the city handle the penalty rate charged on property taxes going forward? And we heard ninety-one percent say that they should change the penalty and interest rate back to one point two, one point two-five percent, which would penalize those who do not pay their taxes on time and have no effect on those who pay the taxes on time. So the, on the next slide, a clear majority wants the interest rates returned to normal and it's a recommendation of staff to do so. Next, we asked about city service rankings. And respondents were asked to rank the services that make a city more livable, from most important to least important. So the city services that make a city livable were ranked as follows, from parks to transit, seniors' recreation facilities, economic development, libraries, sports facilities and fields, pools and splash pads, recreation programming and cultural services and museums. The observations here are that parks, transit, and senior services were ranked very high. All the other listed services were closely ranked except for museums and cultural services. More than fifty percent of the survey respondents were fifty-five years of age and older, which may have influenced service preference. However, the overall age demographic is advancing and these changes are logical. Participatory budgeting, we asked, respond, sorry, we asked that whether the respondents would be in favor of a portion of the city's capital budget being allocated through a participatory budgeting process. And we heard that seventy-nine percent were in favor. Clearly, a majority support participatory budgeting and a report is actually on tonight's agenda regarding that issue. And finally, we asked about customer service strategies. And we asked, which of the following strategies do you think would improve customer service at the city in Niagara Falls? Respondents were asked to select as many as applied. And so sixty-three percent felt an increased online booking and payment services was appropriate. Forty percent increased, wanted to increase in-person services, and fifty percent would like one phone number to call in for all questions. The observation here, clear message to focus on more online and have one consolidated customer service number. And staff have launched Project RITZ, our customer service project. These results will be integrated into our analysis for that project. So thank you for your time and Mr. Burgess will be pleased to answer any of your questions. And we just asked that you receive the presentation tonight.
Great. Do we have any questions? Yes, Councillor Lococo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I brought up participatory budgeting a couple of years ago, I was really excited to see this. And I know with the pandemic, it was hard to get a proper gauge on it. But I'd like to congratulate our past CAO and our current CAO for putting this on the table and our staff for putting it forward. I think it's really important that we understand what our our residents are looking for, what they think is important and maybe things that can go down towards the bottom. And I'm really excited to see the participatory budgeting for two thousand and twenty-three with the recreational component that we'll talk about later. So thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Did you want to make the motion to receive the report?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Second by Councillor Strange.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to it. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a great presentation, Dale. And it's nice to see, you know, getting the input from the residents and what's kind of important to them. And I noticed the top nine or whatever, and the number one was parks. And I don't know if it's because we put in all these new, new playgrounds and stuff in the parks, which we're so lucky to have, and pickleball courts and all that sort of stuff. So it's nice to see. And even with people talking about the tax increase and, you know, not all people just want it at zero, Lord, they want to maintain our assets. And so it's, it's nice to see and get that engagement. So congratulations for staff for getting this out.
Thank you. And I know, I know the CAO loves the parks, too. He was telling me about it, loves our inventory of parks. Yes, Councillor Iannoni?
Number one.
Thank you. Great, great presentation, Dale. Great report from both you and Jason. And I'm glad to see this is the direction we're going. I was also thrilled to see transit be the second priority because I'm sure when you went through your results, you would see transit ties into the seniors who are using transit also. And we had had a working committee a few years ago to find, see how we had to improve our transit system and we are slowly getting there. So I'm very glad to see that that came in second. I'm not surprised at that at all. And I want to keep that in mind when we are talking about transit in an issue that's coming up in a letter of complaint from a resident on transit on McLeod Road because that ties into transit and seniors availability to it also. But phenomenal report. And and I think Mr. Burgess at the beginning of his tenure here said, people want to pay for what they get. Like, they want to see what they're paying for. And these are all things they can actually see what they're paying for. And and as I went into the library today at McBain and people were going into the Coronation Center to play pickleball, I'd just like to know what is pickleball? I have no clue, but they were going in to play it. So I'd just like to congratulate you and I'm so glad that we're going in this direction.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other comments? So I'd also like to say, Dale, thank you for doing a great job, as you always do. Appreciate you compiling all the data and all the information for us to help us with our decisions. So we've got a motion by Councillor Lococo and seconded by Councillor Strange that we receive the report. We'll call the vote, the survey. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much for all that, Dale.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the Niagara Falls Public Library Operating Budget. Alicia, our chief librarian, will provide us with a brief presentation regarding the budget for two thousand and twenty-two. Alicia, are you there?
She's just reconnecting just for one second.
Okay, she's just reconnecting.
Okay. And my vice chair of the board, John Anstrutter, is also here to present.
Oh, you brought in the heavy artillery.
Well, I'm not sure if he can be added. I'll just wait a moment for that to happen.
Okay, I think I'm here now.
Yes, I can hear you.
There he is.
Okay. Your worship, members of council and city staff, thank you for this opportunity to present the Niagara Falls Public Library's two thousand and twenty-two operating budget forecast. Today, I'll be filling in for Ann Andrew Stones, who is unable to attend, attend this evening. Our CEO, Alicia, will join me in giving you some insight into your public library and do our best to explain how we have come to this budget forecast. To begin, I'd like to give you a quick introduction to how your library operates. The library is a separate nonprofit charitable organization and is governed by the Ontario Public Libraries Act. We are required to follow the rules governing us under this act. The board, as appointed by you, our city council, is tasked to oversee our library to ensure that it functions as legislated and is fiscally responsible. The city, under the act and through this budget process, is tasked with funding the majority of our operations on behalf of all of the residents of Niagara Falls. It is often difficult to understand the relationship as described under the act, as it often seems the library is just another department of the city. This is not the case as the library is legislated to operate as a separate entity. Yet we are all working together for the benefit and well-being of our community as partners in the delivery of the essential services that are provided, both needed and wanted to make our great city a great place to live in. The library, along with the city and the rest of the world, has had to work through some tremendous difficulties to cope with and live within the restrictions that COVID-19 has brought upon us. Just to, before we move to the next section, a couple of things. When, when we were younger, a lot of people asked, you know, how do you spell that word? I don't know. Where do you go? Where do you find the answers to this? If you don't have the internet at home, if you don't know how to look, you don't know where to start. Next, I would ask Alicia to review how some of those questions get answered and some important statistics that will give you some perspective on what your library has been doing as shown in our two thousand and twenty annual report. Thank you.
Thanks so much. If you can advance the slide, please. Great, thank you so much. So two thousand and twenty was most certainly an unprecedented year for, for us and for the world. But I do want to just take a local snapshot of how the library did and performed in two thousand and twenty. So in two thousand and twenty, we had one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and seven in-person visits, a majority of that happening pre-lockdown, pre-COVID. We also had three hundred and We also had 330,967 virtual visits as well. Still, pretty good showing for a pandemic year. Slide, please. Very proud to say, oh, I'm sorry, I guess maybe some of our photos are not coming up on the slide, but I'll continue here. I'm very proud to say that the Niagara Falls Public Library has over 40,736 cardholders, active cardholders, who hold memberships at our library. In addition to that, the library continues to serve many individuals without memberships. We have many individuals who come in to use the wifi, use computer services, come by to study or to meet a client for business. And we continue to serve all. Very excited and happy to report that the items borrowed during our 2020 year was 796,815. This number surpasses our 2019 pre-COVID numbers. In 2019, we had 579,000 items borrowed. So, it shows us that many people continue to access the library and many people read during the pandemic. Next slide, please. During the lockdowns, we could also see our parking lots being used, because our wifi is always on. So, during the lockdown and our 2020 year, we had over 40,000 wifi sessions. Computer sessions were also a very important part to us. Many individuals in our city continue to experience the digital divide. And without the library, they would have no access to a computer or to get online. Many individuals still needed to book their vaccination appointments. And recently this year, to print off their proof of vaccination, the library was there to help everyone. Next slide, please. We moved many of our programs all online, virtual. So, during 2020, we had 1,260 programs delivered with over 30,000 attendees. We're very proud of that. Staff were very innovative. Next slide, please. So, at this point in time, there's just a message that John wants to deliver from the library board before we do the budget ask. So, John?
Thank you, Alicia. I'd just like to make a few points on how we've worked through this 2020 year at the library and things that occurred. 2020 was obviously a year of unprecedented challenges due to the COVID-19 pandemic, resulting in government-mandated lockdowns and restrictions. The library regrouped and found a way to continue to provide essential library services within those restraints. The board has made difficult decisions to alter services and lay off staff to rapidly adjust to changing conditions and restrictions, sometimes almost daily. The library continued to work collaboratively with our community partners and social workers so that we could continue to provide essential resources and services to those that are marginalized and experiencing homelessness in our community. The Niagara Falls Public Library was able to pivot quickly in March of 2020 to launch new programs and services within the restrictions imposed on all of us. Many programs were moved online for 24/7 access. Traditional in-person services were stopped or restricted, but were compensated for by huge increases in our virtual use and visiting library delivery services provided to our homebound patrons. Circulation through this and our curbside pickup services skyrocketed, exceeding our 2019 levels by roughly 38%. Partnerships with the District School Board of Niagara and the Niagara Catholic District School Board provided outreach and support to schools and students as a transition to the online learning, which was both well-received and saw steady growth in usage at the library. As the library was allowed to open under specific conditions, as provided by public health, the city and various government agencies, the library implemented mandatory screening, an updated safety plan, Plexiglas barriers and enhanced PPE protocols. Intensive cleaning and sanitation measures were undertaken to prevent the spread of the virus within our branches. Library materials were put under a quarantine protocol where materials had to sit in quarantine for 96 hours prior to being released again. New disinfecting methods were used to ensure that no items were released unchecked. Our new online delivery software and platforms were implemented to better serve our community while adhering to all current public health guidelines and restrictions. In March 2020, we were forced to shut down. But by May, we were able to bring staff back into the branches to begin preparing for curbside service, which started in June. By September, we were able to open the doors once again for computer access and browse, borrow and go service, while maintaining the capacity restrictions and social distancing measures. Sadly, all room bookings and in-person programming were suspended due to the legislation, and some of the restrictions remain in place still today. The library is not able to charge for the majority of our services, as stipulated under the act. So, there is no possibility of increasing revenues to combat inflation, wage and benefit pressures, increased costs for cleaning, PPE and safety protocols. The only way to continue to provide the level of service expected by our community is through this budget process. With all of this going against us, the board is very proud to report that despite the challenges presented by COVID-19, our staff were resilient and compassionate in serving all members of our community. The meaningful and impactful work performed by our library staff, supporting our community partners, transitioning quickly to online programming and curating digital resources for the community, has been nothing short of amazing. During times of economic downturns and crisis, libraries traditionally offer support, services and social human capital, which leverage limited community resources, as well as dynamic partnerships, to aid the recovery process for all of us. The Niagara Falls Public Library is ready and willing to aid in this process and support all our community members in the coming weeks, months and years, together with the support of our staff in the city of Niagara Falls. Next, I would ask Alicia to discuss some social impacts that your library has been involved in. Libraries are not just buildings where books are loaned. They have evolved to significant community resources, supporting everyone in our community.
Thank you, John. So, I just want to take an opportunity to speak about the social impact project we've been doing at the library. My hope is that we are able to come back to council in the future to discuss the full project once it has wrapped up. But we've basically spent the last year, and we're in the final phase of a year-long process of assessing the connections between the activities, services and programs we provide and the social impact on the residents and citizens of Niagara Falls. So, what is social impact? Social impact is the effect of an action, activity, project, program or policy on the well-being of individuals and families in the community. Social impact programs are a way to create public value that serve a local or global community need. Slide, please. So, the next couple of slides show examples of our programs, services and activities, and how they contribute to the well-being of the residents and citizens of Niagara Falls. We are using the Canadian Index of Well-Being. So, this illustrates that our programs, activities and services are intentional and have short-term, medium and long-term outcomes. So, if we take a quick look here, we can see, for instance, education. One of the ways our library supports our community is through pre- and early literacy programming, summer book clubs to summer reading program for kids to help the summer slide when kids are off from school. We do adult book clubs, electronic resources and ebooks. Slide, please. Another area is mental health. And with the pandemic, we've noticed and we've heard of mental health and well-being being, and wellness being a big driver moving forward. So, some of the things that the library has done to help our communities is, for instance, continuing our crafters' noons or paint classes. During the pandemic, our library staff called seniors who were isolated and at home and locked down during the pandemic to offer services and offer the visiting library delivery service to their home, so that they were still able to participate. Working with public health, we've had the Victoria Avenue Library be mobilized for COVID vaccine pop-up clinics, which were very successful. Working with our friends and partners at Positive Living, we've done naloxone and harm reduction training for the members of our community. The Victoria Avenue location is also a cooling and warming center in partnership with the city to serve many that are marginalized in our city. The library as a place, it's a place where we are, where all are welcome, and we serve all citizens in our community. Slide, please. Leisure and culture. Here, I'd just like to touch on the fact that we do quite a bit of programming and services to teens, including teen volunteers. Our Teen Lunch Bunch program, which was operating in 2019, pre-COVID, was a very successful and well-received program. This program, I'm happy to say, was shortlisted for the Minister Awards. And we're very proud of the staff effort there. Slide, please. I'm now going to ask John to do the library board's official ask for our 2020 Forecast Operating Budget.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. Unfortunately, I get to present this to you. But you know what? We're very pleased to say that it's been an extremely tough year. We've gone through so many changes in so little time. It's been exhilarating on some situations, during some situations, and pretty scary in others. The operating budget ask represents a 4% increase, as inflation is currently running at around 4%. In order to get to that 4%, a reduction of $258,000 had to be done from our initial budget numbers, which incurred some hardships for the library. The board had to make some difficult decisions and cost reductions under labor, the Stanford branch rent, reduction in our collection materials as a result of correction in the, the correction in the development charges that we had traditionally used for some of our collections and materials. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the, this is the meat and potatoes that I guess everybody's been looking for. As you can see, we've, we've had some changes in 2022. We've requested an uptick in the city operating grant due to the pressures on us for the costs that we are facing. We have the debentures, local grants, provincial grants, federal grants. You'll notice library receipts is down. That's a direct result of two things that the board had to do. One, we had to stop any rentals within our facilities, because we could not bring people in to rental the marshroom and the other spaces. The other is that the board consciously decided to stop charging fines for overdue library materials during the COVID situation and possibly longer, because so many in our community were without work or had reduced hours and such. So, we hope that that was a small way we can help people continue to use library services without fear of building up a large bill if they had an overdue item. The other item you'll see is donations. We've done a major increase in donations. This has been a weakness under our library programming for a while, and we're refocusing on trying to get increased donations this year, especially with the work that we're doing at Stanford. And also, we have a project hopefully coming down in the future for CHIPWAT to make major improvements in both of those branches. On the expense side, we, like the city and pretty well everybody else, have been hit with increased labor costs, mercs, benefits and training. So, we've upped that somewhat, because we are in the same boat as virtually everyone else. It's very hard to mitigate contracted labor costs and such, and OMRs and other things that are increasing. Well, we're kind of caught in that, and we have to reflect that within our budget. You'll notice under collections, there's a reduction. We have a reduction of approximately $66,000. Part of that is what we've built into a reduction in our operating budget request. But part of it is also from the correction to the development charges, which has seen a decrease for us in the 2022 and 2023 budget years. In the technology section, we've had to up both our hardware, our information software, and we've added what are called hotspots. This is a direct result of trying to maintain and improve our digital services, our online services, because a lot of the equipment at our library was becoming obsolete. It was getting old. But we've also had such a huge demand for this service that it costs us more to get further hardware equipment and, of course, the software to operate that. Hotspots are an interesting thing, where people will be able to loan devices so that they can take them home and use the internet at home for those that cannot afford the internet. So, it's a new loan program that really, we hope, is going to help so many of our community members that just cannot afford to, to pay for high-speed internet. Under the facilities, the hydro, water, gas and such, we've got a reduction in there. This came about because we're in the process of transitioning our Stanford branch from the old space into our new space. Sadly, COVID-19 has really hurt us in this, because the project is well behind schedule only because we couldn't get things done as fast as we'd like to. We have had some good success there with our RFP just recently closed, and we're in the process of getting the design consultant hired and get moving on that. We certainly hope that the new Stanford branch will be operational before the end of 2022. That you'll see reflected in the rents and fees, where we're going up in some spaces, because due to the delay of getting out of the old space and into the new space, we're eliminating the cost of the old space. But unfortunately, we now have to take on the full cost of the new space. And that's why you see a rent increase there. We've also had a change at McBain, where we're now with city taking management of the facility over. We're still sharing space there. So, things are changing there as well. And we hope that that's going to be a good relationship continuing, because it's a great space. Auditing, insurance, contracted services, et cetera, you'll see a boost there. One of the biggest hits for us there, besides insurance, is contracted services. And under that heading is security. It's one thing that we really, truly wish the library didn't have to look at. But unfortunately, especially at our Victoria branch, we've had so many incidents of problems there that we need to keep security on, on a full-time basis. And it's sad, because there are so many people that come to the library for help. But the way things are going today, so many people are, seem to have, there's more attitude problems, there's more homelessness. We have people with mental health issues and drug-related issues. And unfortunately, that is reflecting sometimes in our branches. And while we do our best to keep our staff trained to help as much as we can, there are situations where we really need security. And it's a sad commentary on how life is developing. But the library, like many places, has had to put this in, because we still have a responsibility to our patrons and our staff to try to ensure a healthy and safe workplace. As you can see on the transfers and the long-term expenses, not a great deal of change there. The long-term debt principle is our portion for 2022 that we are paying off for the HVAC renovations that were done at Victoria a few years back. So, overall, what we're requesting at this point is $5,306,583, which is approximately a 4% increase from the previous year. And while we realize that that's a difficult ask, it's what is necessary to just try to keep us out there for the people that are using our services. And there are a lot of our neighbors, our residents, our friends, that are using the library. And fortunately, we have that service to provide them. Just the next slide. A couple of things that I've probably touched on, the budget drivers and cost reductions. We certainly have reduced revenues, because there are no room rentals and the fees. On the labor side, there's a 1%, a 1.8% COLA adjustment, I think similar to the city. We still have our standard step progressions for some of our staff and the increased cost for providing the benefits. On the facility side, the Stanford service expansion, the rent there, obviously, we're now paying rent on the new space. We're trying to eliminate the rent on the old space as of the end of this calendar year. The good news there is that our RFP has been completed for the design, and we're really excited to get that contractor signed up and get moving on that so we can get the construction starting. Security and insurance fees, of course, have increased. I think that's something that's gone, insurance has gone up for most of us in the country, let alone here in Niagara Falls. There's also an increase in the cost of materials and services that are downloaded to the library, the books, the shipping, et cetera. One thing with a lot of virtual services is they're very expensive to purchase and provide to the people. And that's because the way the suppliers are charging for it. We are working diligently, hopefully, to bring those costs down. We're trying to do shared services. And through the library associations we're involved with, we're hoping that there will be a little bit of a we're hoping that there will be a little bit of a break on that. But at this point in time, it's not in the foreseeable future. Some of the things that we've done to mitigate the increase is, as a charitable organization, we are mobilizing for fundraising, and we continue to source grants wherever we can to help support your library. On the labor side, we're not filling some vacant positions and using attritions to try to keep our labor costs as low as we possibly can. On the facility side, obviously, transitioning the services at the Stanford Center branch, we're pausing the current service there in hopes to get our new branch up and running. We still offer our visiting library services for our shut-ins, the novel branch, which is set up at the Gale Center, and curbside pickup is still available. We are reducing our collections basically by purchasing less material. And unfortunately, that's as a direct result of some changes to the development charges that we traditionally got in, as well as us trying to cut part of our operating budget. It's not the prettiest picture, but it is going to give us the opportunity at that rate to maintain the services that we are providing to our community and to keep your library vibrant and growing in this time to keep everyone in Niagara Falls available to the service. And so much of our service is provided free of charge to the users, and we look to the city of Niagara Falls to continue with their ongoing enthusiastic support to keep this vital service going. Next, I'd like to close on one other thing, and I'm going to ask Alicia to say it's not all bad news in the city of Niagara Falls, and it certainly isn't all bad news at our library. She's got a couple of good things to let you think about as we go forward. Thank you.
Thanks so much, John, for presenting the budget ask. And yes, there are lots of good things happening at the library. And I have to say, it has been incredibly heartwarming to see people coming through the doors again and to continue to get notes and emails and little cards with people expressing their gratitude for the library service. So, you know, in a city our size, as I mentioned earlier, we have over 40,000 library members, and we serve many more than that who walk through our doors who don't have a membership. And I think the quote in the middle really sums up our 2020 year well. It has been a wonderful time reading, escaping the day-to-day of 2020. What a year it has been. Your dedication to all of us who love to read has meant the world to me and many others. We thank you so very much. And with that, I just want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the city, city staff, and the city council for your continued support during a very difficult and unprecedented year. Thank you so much for your time. We're happy to take some questions.
Thank you very much, Alicia. I'm going to pass the chair over to Vic, Dr. Peter Angelo. Victor is actually the budget chair, and I should have did that earlier. My apologies. Okay, and I know Councilor Iannone has her hand up as well.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilor Iannone.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to John and Alicia. I have to say, I went back for the first time today. It's my happy place. I was so thrilled to walk through the McBain doors. You guys know my thoughts on libraries. I loved seeing it in the top four of the priorities that residents want us to invest in. That was fantastic. And I have to say, through the pandemic, without books, those of us who struggled mental health-wise with being alone or being isolated and not being able to go anywhere, we would have had nowhere to escape to. And it was fantastic that you could still do and get books with the outreach program. It was fantastic. And I want to say, having sat on your board so long, I am just amazed at your board's effort on dealing with the most vulnerable in our community, dealing with the homeless, taking the locks and courses, learning how to deal with those who have mental health and drug addiction issues. Extremely important and not a job, I remember, Alicia, when you came to us saying, not a thing you thought you would have to deal with in your job. And all of our library staff were trained that way, and it is a phenomenal outreach effort. And I just want to say, as we see things hopefully getting back to normal, we're not there yet, it's not over, but you can kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel. I talked to a lot of moms and nanas who are daily... Our schedule is included bringing our grandkids to the library, our children to the library, to the library programs, and then going to swim lessons and then eating in the rotunda at Gale Center. Like, that was a staple for a lot of people. And I have a 19-month-old grandson who is just meeting people now, is just learning there's people outside of this pandemic world. And I haven't been able to do those programs with him, same programs that I did with my older grandchild. And I have another grandchild coming very shortly. So I'd like to see those programs back up and running and for us to be able to make the library the happy place for kids that it is for the adults. So I think you're a phenomenal service, and I think we have an amazing board. And I would, Mr. Chair, I would be happy to move the budget ask for the library.
Okay, before I take that motion, let me just get Mr. Burgess to comment. Typically, when organizations make budget presentations, it's referred to final budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, refer to the budget.
Yeah, refer to final budget deliberations.
I'm sorry, refer to the final budget.
Okay, that's the motion I'll take, and I have a second there by Councilor LaCoco. Do I have any other councillors that wish to speak? Councilor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Alicia and John, for the presentation. I've had the opportunity of sitting on the library board this term, and it's not just about books, it's just about so much more. And these are services that you're providing to our community. So thank you so much for all of that to you and your board. And I know that you've worked really hard to get the budget from what you originally started to, to what you're asking tonight. So I would second that motion to refer to the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments by council? If not, then I'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried unanimously. So thank you for your presentation, both Alicia and John.
Thank you so much for having us. Appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Yeah, have a good evening. Good night, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 5.5, the 2022 Water/Wastewater Budget. And I know that we have Mr. Levens, who is going to be running through the presentation. Mr. Levens, are you with us? There you are, hello.
Thank you very much. I'll just get my screen shared here. Is everybody able to see my screen?
Yes, and to follow along, this is attachment one for us.
That's right, yeah, there is a report, and this is attachment number one.
Okay, sounds good.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor Teodati, council members, staff, and all of others tuning in tonight. Tonight, I will be presenting the 2022 Water and Wastewater Budgets. The utility operating budget is comprised of the water and wastewater service area. Each service area is to be self-funded, meaning the water and wastewater rates are to be set at a level that will generate adequate revenue to cover all operating expenses to each service area. Tonight, I will provide a brief overview of the responsibilities in a two-tiered utility system, touch on the primary budget pressures, highlight what is included in the proposed budgets, discuss the proposed rates and their impact on the customers, and lastly, provide a recommendation to approve the budget and rates, option one, as presented. This slide highlights some of the general regional responsibilities in providing water and wastewater services to the ratepayers of Niagara Falls. The region extracts and treats water for safe drinking and supplies water to the city for distribution to its customers. The regional water rate structure for municipal customers is 75% volumetric and 25% fixed. The region is also responsible for maintaining specific portions of water infrastructure located within the city. With respect to wastewater, the region is responsible for treating wastewater before it is released back into the natural environment. The regional wastewater rate structure for municipal customers is 100% fixed. The region is also responsible for wastewater infrastructure spanning municipal boundaries and is a co-contributor to capital projects through the Combined Sewer Overflow Program. The City of Niagara Falls Council is the utility management authority approving city budgets, rates, and policy. Municipal works are responsible for maintaining city-owned and controlled infrastructure through an asset management program. The financial department is responsible for billing, collections, and designing long-term financial strategies to fund the asset management program. I will now discuss some of the overall 2022 budget pressures. Actual water consumption has been below anticipated levels for two consecutive years. With COVID-19 pandemic restrictions in place, industrial, commercial, and institutional consumption was down 24% in 2020 and dropped another 8% in 2021. With stay-at-home orders in effect, residential consumption increased by 8% in 2020, but then dropped by 2% in 2021. During a normal year, the ICI customers typically make up about 53% of total consumption. Even though residential customers make up 96% of the total utility customers, the increase in residential consumption was not enough to offset the drop in ICI. As actual consumption did not meet estimated consumption and volumetric charges make up 60% of the city's rate structure, revenue shortfalls have been experienced. Furthermore, a declining fixed rate and flat variable rate for the past two consecutive years has contributed to decreasing revenue. As such, like 2019 and 2020, a deficit is predicted for 2021. This is not sustainable. Rates need to be set at levels that fully fund operations to avoid a deficit and the practice of funding through accumulated surplus. The 2022 budget incorporates a conservative consumption estimate based on one normal year and two low years of consumption. 2021 growth rates by customer class have also been considered in the estimate to take into account COVID-19 recovery trends. Water and wastewater systems are capital-intensive. The recent BMA study identifies an annual gap in capital reserve contributions. The updated Core Asset Management Plan that will be submitted to the province July 1st, 2022 is anticipated to identify a significantly large infrastructure gap. The 2022 capital budget approved November 16th is using combined reserves of $7.7 million, which will require replenishment. Debt service charges related to new approved debt for water and wastewater capital projects will need to be funded through 2020 water and wastewater rates. In order to align with the July 1st, 2022 Asset Management Plan, this budget includes increased capital reserve contributions and debt service charges for approved debt. I will now outline the proposed 2022 water budget, highlighting some of the features and summarizing the numbers. The water budget concerns itself with the supply and delivery of fresh potable water from the source to the customer's property. The city water network consists of approximately 475 kilometers of water mains delivering water to approximately 31,000-metered customers. Bulk water services are also included in this budget. This budget implements three key recommendations from the most recent BMA study of August 2021. This budget maintains the rate structure that is best aligned with the key rate-setting principles of the city, namely, conservation, affordability, fairness and equity, revenue stability, economic development, and practicality. This budget continues a phased-in strategy of adjusting meter equivalency ratios to the American Water Works Association standards. The AWWA equivalency ratios use 5/8-inch meters as the base, all other meter sizes receiving a weighting based on comparative meter costing. A multi-year phased-in approach is used to avoid large impacts to mid-sized commercial customers. This budget moves towards sustainability for the delivery of our bulk water services. The bulk water rate is now aligned with the cost of providing bulk water services. The rate also considers asset management and provides for a $25,000 annual contribution for future investment in bulk water infrastructure. The budget also includes a $6 million transfer to the capital reserve, representing a $680,000 increase from prior year. This transfer is recommended in the BMA study. This transfer will help narrow the infrastructure gap to be reported in the July 1st, 2022 Core Asset Management Plan. $340,000 is included in the budget to service the debt service charges that have been included in the budget to repay approved debt related to capital investment. A full-time environmental service analyst position has been included in the budget. This position related to asset management and will analyze and provide performance measures on the environmental services data, including the collection and management of water meter readings. There are several benefits to addressing asset management financial requirements. Keeping the water network in a state of good repair should decrease water leaks and water main breaks. Water loss during such events is non-billable consumption or non-revenue water. In such situations, the city is purchasing water from the region for which it generates no revenue. These events can be minimized through asset management. Meters in good working condition provide both the city and customer with accurate and timely reads. For the city, this means accurate billing and revenue recognition. For the customer, services improve with fewer estimates, missed reads, and back billing. The following programs continue to exist in the 2022 budget: seniors rebate, disability rebate, high-consumption rebate, and the sodwatering rebate. On November 18th, the seniors advisory committee put forth a motion to increase the seniors rebate by 2% to adjust for the cost of living. Council may wish to consider at this time a similar increase to the disability rebate. This increase has not been incorporated into the budget I am presenting tonight. A 2% increase to both rebates would result in an increase in expenses of approximately $1,900, having a minimal impact on rates. The following table shows total budgeted expenses by government-tier responsibility. The cost of purchasing wholesale water treated and delivered to the city infrastructure by the region accounts for 49% of the budgeted expenses. 51% of expenses relate to the city's responsibility of delivering fresh water to customers through a well-maintained water supply network. This table shows water service expenses in more detail. Overall, the amount to be raised from volumetric and fixed water rates has increased by 6.41%. The main drivers contributing to this increase are the $705,000 increase in the contribution to capital reserves and the $805,000 increase in net city operating changes. The $805,000 increase includes $340,000 in new debt service charges related to capital investment, $146,000 in labor and benefits, including the new full-time position as previously discussed, and the fulfillment of employment contract obligations, $114,000 in contract services covering increases to locating services, Neptune 360 software, and a study to review non-rate revenue for water and wastewater fees, $93,000 in materials relating to repair and maintenance of meters, ARBs, and related wiring, an increase to internal rent and indirect costs of $80,000 represents increased contribution to the capital reserve for fleet replacement. And lastly, rents and financial expenses are up by $30,000 due to increased in high-consumption water adjustments and the inclusion of the disability rebate program. The disability rebate program was approved subsequent to the approval of the 2021 rates. I will now outline the proposed wastewater budget, highlighting some of the budget features and summarizing the numbers. This budget concerns itself with the conveyance of wastewater from the customer's property to regional treatment facilities where the wastewater is treated and released back to the natural environment. The city's wastewater collection system is comprised of approximately 434 kilometers of wastewater mains. This budget also implements key recommendations from the most recent BMA study of August 2021. This budget also implements key recommendations from the most recent BMA study of August 2021. The budget maintains the current rate structure and moves closer to the AWWA equivalency ratios as previously discussed. The budget also includes a $6.5 million transfer to the capital reserve, representing a $1.1 million increase from prior year. This is also a recommendation of the BMA study. This transfer will help narrow the infrastructure gap to be reported in the July 1st, 2022 core asset management plan. The budget includes $340,000 in annual debt service charges that have been included in the budget to repay approved debt related to capital investment. It is important to address the financial requirements of wastewater asset management. Wastewater mains in good state of repair and separate from storm sewers will minimize groundwater and rainwater infiltration. Infiltration of groundwater and rainwater into sewers, sanitary sewers, needs to be minimized to avoid costly treatment at regional wastewater facilities. Rainwater should be managed through a stormwater sewer system, which is a separate service than wastewater services. The weeping tile removal assistance program continues to exist in the 2022 budget. The purpose of this program is to disconnect weeping tile from the sanitary sewer. The benefits of disconnection include reduced basement flooding, reduced sewage overflow into the natural environment, reduced sewage treatment costs, increased public awareness, and provide financial incentive to homeowners who disconnect their weeping tile. In 2021, it is estimated that a total of 145 applications will be received, of which 90 will be approved. There are two incentive programs. The weeping tile disconnection program allows for a maximum incentive of $4,000, and the backwater valve program, $1,200. Information about the program is located on the city's website along with contact information. Before I present this slide, I would like to bring your attention in there. The Niagara Falls portion should be 48, not 45, as was attached on the budget report. But this table shows the total budgeted expenses by government-tier responsibility. The cost of wastewater treatment by the region accounts for 52% of the budgeted expenses. 48% of the expenses relate to the city responsibilities of maintaining a wastewater conveyance network, moving wastewater to regional infrastructure for treatment. This table shows wastewater expenses in more detail. Overall, the amount to be raised from volumetric and fixed wastewater rates has increased by 7.89%. The main driver contributing to the increase is the $1.1 million increase in the contribution to capital reserves as recommended by the BMA study. $413,000 increase in net city operating charges is primarily due to the increase in debt service charges and internal rent. Internal rent includes a contribution to the fleet reserve for future replacement of fleet assets used in wastewater services. The city of Niagara Falls has adopted a two-part rate structure for both water and wastewater services. The rate structure is comprised of a volumetric charge and a fixed charge. The volumetric rate aims to recover 60% of service delivery cost. The volumetric rate is charged per cubic meter of water consumed as measured by a water meter. The magnitude of the charge to the customer is dependent on their water usage behavior and the condition and security of water infrastructure located on their property past the point of the water meter. It is a uniform rate, meaning the price per cubic meter is constant despite consumption and customer user class. The volumetric rate provides fairness, equity, water conservation, and practicality. Conversely, the fixed rate is based on user class or meter size and aims to recover 40% of the service delivery cost. The AWWA equivalency ratios are based on user class servicing costs where the residential meter size is used as the base. The fixed rate is an unavoidable charge, meaning customers are charged this rate regardless of measured consumption. The fixed rate promotes revenue stability and fairness equity by considering the user class and service costs. This table presents the volumetric and fixed rates required to recover service delivery costs presented in the 2022 water and wastewater budgets. Compared to prior year, the residential water and wastewater fixed rates increased by 3.69% and 7.98%, and experienced an overall increase of $28.32 per year, or 5.8%. Uniform volumetric rate for water and wastewater increases 13.11%, 11.11% and 12.95%, experienced an overall increase of approximately 30 cents per cubic meter or a 13% increase from prior year. This table presents customer accounts by user class. The 5/8ths by 3/4 user class, predominantly residential, makes up over 96% of the customer base. Less than 4% of the customer base is comprised of industrial, commercial, institutional customers, who typically account for 53% of the consumption. As 60% of the city's cost recovery is based on the volumetric rate, it is imperative that the billable consumption estimates are based on current trends and economic conditions. If estimates are too aggressive, targets will not be achieved, and the water and wastewater services will likely run a deficit as volumetric revenue will not meet budget. Sorry, I just got to find my place again. We will look at what the impact of these proposed rates are on a 5/8ths by 3/4-inch customer who make up 96% of the customer base. We will look at three scenarios: low, medium, and high-water users. For a low user, consuming 84 cubic meters of water annually, the difference is $53.86 per year or $4.49 per month. This would represent an increase of 7.9% annually. For a medium user, consuming 176 cubic meters of water annually, the difference is $81.82 per year or $6.82 per month. This would represent an increase of 9.1%. Lastly, for a high user, consuming 268 cubic meters of water annually, this difference is $109.79 per year or $9.15 per month. This would represent an increase of 9.9% annually. This slide compares the annual cost of water and wastewater services to residential customers across Niagara municipalities for low, medium, and high-consumption scenarios. There are two things to note here. Number one, this table compares our 2022 proposed rates to the 2021 approved rates of other local municipalities. It's most likely that other municipalities' 2022 rates will increase, so their positions most likely will increase relative to Niagara Falls. Number two, if you compare this table to the table Ms. Clark presented one year ago, you will see that Niagara Falls still holds the same relative positions in this listing. This suggests that despite proposing an increase to capital reserve contributions, debt service charges, and the other items discussed earlier, the city of Niagara Falls, when compared to other Niagara municipalities, will still offer water and wastewater services to its customers well below the annual average cost. At the city, a low, medium, and high-residential customer will experience charges that are 12%, 3.8%, and 14.9% below Niagara's average. Lastly, the BMA study indicates that water/wastewater cost as a percentage of average household income is the most common approach to measuring ratepayer affordability. Affordability is questionable beyond a range of 1.5% to 3%. When substituting the 2022 annual cost calculated in the low, medium, and high scenarios, the affordability metric is 0.86%, 1.15%, and 1.44%, respectively, all within the BMA range. This does not include any rebates offered by the city. At $100 per rebate, an eligible customer consuming 84 cubic meters of water would receive a 13.6% rebate on the water/wastewater bill. This table compares the combined monthly fixed charges by meter size or user class. All user classes experience an increase ranging from 5.06% to 13.69%. Variances are not consistent amongst user classes due to the multi-year phase-in to AWWA equivalency ratio standards as recommended in the BMA report. The AWWA equivalency ratios use a 5/8ths meter as a base, where all other meter sizes receive a weighting based on comparative meter costing. The second option for council to consider would be a budget with less emphasis on asset management, whereby the city maintains its status quo with respect to capital reserve contributions. This option would reduce total capital reserve contributions by $980,000, $280,000 from water, and $700,000 from wastewater. Under this option, the city would not meet its targeted asset management contributions as outlined in the BMA study. Therefore, furthermore, there is less impact on narrowing the infrastructure gap that will be reported July 1st, 2022. This slide compares options 1 and 2. To meet the capital reserve contributions as recommended in the BMA study, the increase in annual fixed costs for residential customers is an increase of $10.44 annually, or 2.1%. The increase in the volumetric rate for cubic meter is 5.5 cents, or 2.1%. To move from the status quo budget, option 2, to meeting reserve contribution recommendations, option 1, the annual change for low, medium, and high residential customers is $15.06, $20.12, and $25.18. All user class fixed rates will experience a 2.3% increase moving from a status quo budget, option 2, to a budget that incorporates greater contributions to capital reserves, option 1. Furthermore, when compared to other Niagara municipalities' cost of service, the city maintains its same position under option 2 as option 1. Increasing the amount of contributions to capital reserves does not significantly affect the city's cost of service relative to other local area municipalities. Increasing capital reserves to fund future capital investment will assist in narrowing the infrastructure gap. Therefore, staff recommend the following. That council approved the 2022 water and wastewater budget and associated rates for option 1 as presented. And secondly, that if council decides to include a 2% increase to the 2022 senior and disability water rebate, staff incorporate this increase into the 2022 water and wastewater rates as presented in option 1. That concludes the 2022 water and wastewater budget presentation. Happy to take questions.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Levens. Appreciate that. And if council will look at the report, you can see that there's three recommendations in the report. Staff are recommending option 1 in the first recommendation. Option 1 would have a greater emphasis on our infrastructure, as Mr. Levens has just gone through. And also, in recommendation number 2, council needs to decide, which is probably a good idea, if they want to increase the senior and disability water rebate that we give by 2%. So there's three recommendations there for you to adopt. Looking for a motion to adopt all three recommendations made by Councilor Campbell, segmented by Councilor Thompson. Are there any questions or comments at all? Facing none, I'll call the vote then. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried, and I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair Budget Chair. Chair Peter Angel, that was exciting. Thank you. All right, I'll now ask our clerk if he'd please introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a draft plan of subdivision and to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed application for 449 detached dwelling lots, 24 lots for 48 semi-detached dwellings, 32 blocks for 183-on-street townhouses, one block for medium-density residential, as well as blocks for provincially significant wetlands, significant woodland, and associated buffers. Stormwater management, open space, walkways, hydro corridor, road widening, 0.3-meter reserves, future private condominium road, and land to be dedicated as municipal streets. This is to be located on 121.8 acres of land on the north side of Willock Road between Sodom Road and Willoughby Drive. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, November 5th, 2021. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the draft plan of subdivision and the zoning bylaw amendment, to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal with regards to the zoning bylaw amendment portion only, shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would now ask our acting director of planning, Andrew Bryce, and Sam Valeo, which you both popped on at the same time, if you'd please explain the purpose and reason for the proposed draft plan and bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is Queensway Chippewa Properties, Inc. If they could go to the next slide, please. Property is located south of Patrick Cummings Park, between Sodom Road and Willoughby Drive. Property is bounded on the west by some detached dwellings fronting onto Sodom Road. The Chippewa West subdivision, which consists of dwellings, semis, and townhouses to the west, the Legends Golf Course to the east, and the Legends Condominium Townhouse Development to the northeast. Next. This illustrates the proposed draft plan. Much of the developed portion of the land is taken out by single detached dwellings. There are some semi-detached dwellings located close to the northwest corner of the property. Street towns are located on the south side of the property along Willock Road. There is an environmental protection area protecting a provincially significant wetland in the southeast corner of the property. And finally, there is a medium-density block identified for future development, likely through condominiums, that could be developed for low-rise apartments or block townhouses. Next. Property is currently zoned rural under the Willoughby bylaw. The applicant is requesting the land be rezoned and placed under zoning bylaw number 79200 with the following zones: for the lots and the on-street townhouse blocks, the site-specific residential mix, or R3 zone; for the medium-density residential block, the residential low-density group multiple dwelling, R4 zone; the PSW is requested to be put under the Environmental Protection Area, EPA zone; and finally, the other blocks, the stormwater management, the walkways, and the hydro corridor, under the open space zone. Next. Two neighborhood open house meetings were held. One was held shortly after the application was submitted initially in 2018, in November 18th, 2018. And one was held earlier this year, September to 2021. That was after the submission of the current proposal. Approximately six residents attended each meeting. Approximately six residents attended each meeting. The concerns raised include infrastructure capacity and costs, increased traffic congestion, the density, lot size, and proposed housing types in the development, potential impact to the wetland on the property and wildlife, the loss of agricultural land and village character, construction impacts, and finally, resident notification and input. Next, please. Many of these questions will be fairly addressed later in the report. But staff wanted to offer the following specific comments. The draft plan conditions require the confirmation of sewer capacity, expansion of services at the expense of the developer, monitoring and potential improvements to the Sodom-Lions Creek intersection to address traffic. The provincially significant wetland will be placed under the EPA zone. The applicant will be required to obtain any approvals regarding species at risk before registration of any phase of development. The land has been designated for residential use since the 1970s. It was identified in the 1973 official plan. The proposed subdivision's lot dimensions and building heights are consistent with nearby developments. The city's municipal works department issued a site alteration permit for site preparation on a portion of the site. The condition of the streets are monitored during construction, and the developer is responsible for cleaning streets as a result of any kind of construction debris at their own cost. And finally, I wanted to note that notification was given in accordance with the Planning Act requirements for the open houses and for this public meeting. Next. With respect to the planning analysis and provincial policies, the Planning Act requires that city planning decisions be consistent with and conform to provincial policies. To achieve compact development and reduce urban sprawls, provincial policies require a minimum density of 50 jobs and persons per hectare in the greenfield areas, such as the subject lands. This density is a bit higher than some older established neighborhoods in the city, but that is the current vision of the province. Proposed development is consistent and conforms as follows. The proposed development is within a settlement area, and assists in the creation of complete community with a range of housing options. And finally, it minimizes land consumption and servicing costs with a compact development. The proposed subdivision's density is 55.7 persons and jobs per hectare, as compared to 50 jobs and persons per hectares, which is the minimum target. That complies with the provincial targets. Natural heritage features, including the PSW, will be protected. And finally, the recommended regulations will facilitate the development of a land in a manner that offers a mixture of housing to accommodate the needs of people of old ages. Next. The official plan designates the land residential, environmental protection area, and environmental conservation area, as well, it's within the designated greenfield area of the city. Proposed development conforms with the official plan as follows: The lands have been identified for residential development since the 1970s. Development will fulfill longstanding plans to provide housing for residents. The proposed development will have a range of dwelling types with a density of 55.7 jobs and persons per hectare. That is above the minimum city target of 53 persons and jobs per hectare for the greenfield area. It utilizes land efficiently and has compatibility with the built and natural environment. The extension of municipal services from Sodom Road, Willoughby Drive, is orderly and logical. The developer is required to confirm to the region's satisfaction that there is capacity in the sanitary sewer system prior to any final approval of any phase of development. Extension of services are to be at the developer's cost, except where cost sharing may be considered if it is a benefit to the city. And finally, a block containing the PSW has been established with appropriate buffer blocks to ensure the protection. This will be zoned EPA. And next. City's official plan, further, there's an establishment of a phasing framework that determines when urban lands are to be brought on stream, considering development needs and servicing availability. The lands are in the Phase 2 area. There's actually four phases of development. It's in the Phase 2 area. Official plan allows later-phase areas to be developed, subject to a set of criteria. Subdivision conforms to these criteria as follows: The city is required to maintain at least a three-year short-term supply of land and lots for housing development. The city's inventory of vacant lands pursuant to our housing inventory report earliest year is less than five years. Furthermore, the supply of detached lots is about three years. To draw draft approval of the subdivision will provide necessary housing to meet requirements. Nearly all the Phase 1 lands have been developed or draft approved. The only significant parcel with residential lands is a Grand Niagara secondary plan. It's unknown when these lands will be developed to provide the necessary housing. Servicing and transportation infrastructure exists to service the land, subject to fulfilling of the recommended conditions. Furthermore, the development represents an early extension of the city's development area. And finally, the extension of the services to service the land will be at the developer's cost to minimize financial risk to the city. Next. The applicant is requesting to amend the zoning bylaw to have its regulations not applied to the subject lands and place the lands under zoning bylaw number 79200. Next. The applicant is requesting the lots and the on-street townhouse blocks to be rezoned R3, site-specific. The medium-density residential block is to be zoned R4. They're requesting that. In addition to those uses, the R3 zone permits a triplex and a quadruplex dwelling. The R4 zone permits a townhouse dwelling, an apartment dwelling, or groups of two or more townhouse and apartment dwellings. Next. This summarizes the site-specific regulations that are being requested. Specifically, they're requesting reductions to lot area, lot frontage, and requesting an increase in height of 1 meter to the building's instructions, 11 meters versus 10 meters. They're requesting a change in the interpretation in the case of pie-shaped lots, where lots, side lot lines are not parallel. Requesting that it be taken 0.6 meters back from the front lot line. That just is for ease of interpretation. And finally, the requesting that required parking be provided in tandem. Next. Requested zoning is appropriate as follows: The R3 zone is intended to regulate the proposed lots and on-street townhouse dwelling blocks. Requested reduction to the R3 regulations for lot area and lot frontage is supported as suitable block dimensions are maintained, an acceptable building envelope remains, and a compact urban form will result. Like to add that similar reductions to the lot area, lot frontage have been granted for other greenfield areas in the city, including the Warren Woods area. The height increase to 11 meters is minor and will not have a negative impact on the budding properties. Finally, the R4 zone is intended to regulate townhouse and apartment dwellings as appropriate for the medium-density block. Building heights will be limited to 10 meters in that block. Staff do not support the requested permission for a tandem parking, for required parking, the R3 zone. It's not required as these dwelling unit types are only required to have one parking spot per unit. Next. The PSW is requested to be placed under the Environmental Protection Area zone, while the applicant is requesting the stormwater management, walkways, and hydro corridor blocks to be placed under the open space zone. The requested zoning for these lands is appropriate. Next. The proposed subdivision creates up to 926 dwelling units. That basically, the up to is the medium-density block has been calculated on the maximum density that would be permitted for that block under the requested zoning. Block for the PSW is proposed, and associate buffers for that PSW, stormwater management, open space block, as well as walkways, hydro corridor, roads, and road widens. It's anticipated the development will proceed in phases. The layout provides street connections for private lands fronting onto Sodom Roads to be developed at a later date by others. The region has requested a set of conditions addressing regional infrastructure, requiring flow monitoring and capacity confirmation prior to each, prior to final approval of each phase of development to address wet weather flows and wet weather capacity. Specifications for municipal and private servicing to limit flow amounts from the development to permissible levels to minimize impacts on wet weather flow will be implemented through the conditions of approval. Wanted to add that the city has begun to implement the recommendations of the recent infiltration and inflow study for the South Niagara Falls area. Further study of the degree of wet weather flow reduction achieved will be initiated in the spring of 2022. Finally, our municipal works section has confirmed there is dry weather flow capacity within the city infrastructure to accommodate the development. Next, a set of conditions addressing city, regional, and agency commons and concerns are listed in Schedule 1 to the report. More than 70 conditions are listed. Extension of roads and services are to be at the developer's cost. Stormwater management plans will be approved by the region, the NPCA, and the city. Developer is proposing a below-grade storage system with the above-grade dry pool that's at the north end of the property, adjacent to the Cummings Park, that will contain water during excessive events prior to controlled discharge to existing ditches. Confirmation of servicing capacity will be required to the satisfaction of the region with each phase of development. Opportunities for cost-sharing agreements, where appropriate with the city, to provide an opportunity to service lots outside the subdivision that use private services, as well as to construct Willock Road, will be considered. Protection of, essentially, significant wetland will be required. Attaining the necessary approvals from the Ministry of Environment related to any species at risk on the lands will be required. Traffic monitoring and any necessary improvements to the intersection of Sodom and Lions Creek roads under the region's jurisdiction will be required. Cash and lieu of park and dedication will be required for the development. In addition to receiving cash and lieu, the dry pond adjacent to the Cummings Park would be available for passive recreation uses outside of storm events. Secondary, a secondary means of access for emergency purposes will be required if the subdivision is phased, provide a safe access, safe second access for these vehicles. And finally, all other matters typically covered under the subdivision process will be addressed with conditions of approval. Next. Planning staff recommends the applications for the following reasons: The proposed development conforms to the provincial policies with respect to contributing towards the achievement of intensification targets, as well as protecting natural heritage features. The proposal is in conformity with the city's official plan as it provides a variety of housing types, meets density targets, offers efficient expansion of infrastructure while protecting the natural heritage features. Infrastructure can support the proposed development subject to the implementation of the recommended conditions. The requested site-specific residential zones maintain appropriate regulations for the proposed dwelling types and ensure the proposed development will be compatible with surrounding properties. The requested EPO zone is appropriate for the PSW. Why the OS zone, the open space zone, is appropriate for those other stormwater management and open space blocks? Recommendation, next slide, please. That the applicant, application to amend the zoning bylaw be approved, subject to the regulations outlined in this report. The plan of subdivision be draft approved, subject to the recommended conditions. The mayor and, the mayor or designate be authorized to sign draft plan as approved, provided no appeals of the decision having launched. The draft approval will be granted for three years, after which approval will lapse unless an extension is requested by the developer and granted by council. And finally, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the subdivision agreement and any required documents to allow for the future registration of the subdivision. Thank you.
Do we have any questions of council for Mr. Bryce? Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Through you to Mr. Bryce. Hi, Andrew. Just had a couple of questions. I know in your presentation, you talked about the developer having to make, I guess, an expansion of services if the city and the region deem it necessary. I'm wondering if you can give us some insight as to what those expansion of services would be.
Mr. Bryce?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just requesting a bit of clarification. Was that for cost-sharing agreement? Or for the?
Yeah, I think it was when you said draft plan conditions require the confirmation of sewer capacity, the expansion of services at the expense of the developer, and the monitoring of potential improvements to the Sodom-Lions Creek intersection. It was that bullet?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. The conditions of approval require that the capacity for each phase of development be confirmed. They're required to provide a flow from that development. That flow needs to be confirmed by the region to ensure that the sanitary sewers can accommodate those flows. Furthermore, there is, the region, the intersection of Lions Creek and Sodom Road are under the region's jurisdiction. The region has required that the capacity of that intersection be monitored and that should the, should it be required, the capacity be exceeded, that improvements be constructed at the developers' expense through an agreement that will be executed with the developer and the region.
Okay, thanks. Just in terms of the expansion of services, so the sewer, the sewer lines are going to be running down Sodom and Willoughby, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So if those sewer lines are deemed to need an upgrade in terms of the size of them, then that would be at the developer's cost? That's correct?
Okay, I think I may ask the Director of Municipal Works if he can weigh in.
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Counselor Peter, through Mr. Mayor, Counselor Peter Angelo. We have received the functional servicing review reports already. Our local sewers have the capacity for the dry weather flows from the system. So there's no concerns with any upgrades to existing sewers. Quite simply, what this means is we need to extend the sewers down Sodom Road from Meann Street to the interface of the property. And we need to bring servicing all around this development to make sure that we can access the sewers to the various entry points into the subdivision. But we have, I can confidently say we've confirmed that our local sewers won't require upgrades.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the intersection at Sodom and Lions Creek, I'm just wondering how the improvements would work. Would it be an estimated traffic, I guess, increase that would result from the subdivision, which would precipitate, I guess, enhancements at the intersection? Because, I mean, once, once the developer signs the conditions, are those conditions able to change if they see an increase in traffic and that improvements need to be made?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's based on an agree, not the conditions of approval, but an agreement that will be required to be executed between the developer and the region that will require those, those, those intersection improvements, should it be deemed necessary through the capacity or through the analysis. But they will be required to execute that agreement as a condition or approval of the subdivision.
Okay. And the last question I had, your worship, was just in terms of how many people per hectare the subdivision will achieve, I guess, if you could, for lack of a better word. And I think you said it was 55.6 persons per hectare, and that that met the provincial requirement?
Mr. Bryce?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that meets the minimum requirements that are required for the greenfield areas in the city. required for the greenfield areas in the city. That's 50 jobs and persons per hectare. Just want to add that the city has a slightly higher target of 53 jobs and persons per hectare.
Okay. And in terms of subdivisions, a lot of times we break it down in percentages of R1, R2, R4, or singles, semis, and multis, and it's usually something like 30, 30, 40, depending on the subdivision. Does this, do those type of ratios apply here as well?
Okay, and not specifically. The subdivision is, it's about 55% singles and semis. The street townhounds are about 15 to 20%, and the medium-density block would contribute about 25% of the housing.
Okay, so mostly singles. Okay, that's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilor Coquillot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to Mr. Bryce. Regarding the traffic study, I understand it was done in June of 2020 in the middle of the pandemic, but do I understand you to say now that once the agreement is signed, if the traffic increases, that there will be changes at that point? Because it's a little bit hard to rely on a study when people were at home in the pandemic.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify. The original traffic study was submitted in 2018 and was based on counts that were done in 2017. The updates, including updates in 2020 and 2021, were required to identify changes to the subdivision, as well as there is industry standard where they do apply an annual increase to the background traffic. So the traffic, the actual analysis, the actual traffic counts were not done in 2020, they were done in 2017. However, regardless of that, the traffic is under the regional condition required to be monitored through that agreement.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the cash-in lieu of parkland, usually we see that when there's not a lot of land and there's no room for a park. Why would we not ask for a park and get the cash instead?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, our parks section, design section indicated there was sufficient parkland in Chippewa East, including the Patrick Cummings Park and the adjacent neighborhood park, to fill the requirements of the city. The cash-in lieu parkland would, it's not necessarily just for the acquisition of land, it's for the acquisition of facilities in the park, and so that cash-in lieu can be collected and go towards those facilities. And finally, the applicant, above the cash-in lieu requirement, there would be a passive recreational area provided with that dry pond.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the tree-saving plan, in addition to the PSWs, is the tree-saving plan on top of the PSWs? Are there other trees there that will go through the tree-saving plan?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, they would be required to do a tree-saving plan for the PSW and also the associated buffers. And through that, there is various requirements for a, you know, an inventory of the lands. And also, there is requirements that they have an ecological restoration plan to address invasive species that may be in that PSW or the buffers.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me approximately how many acres of trees in addition to the PSW are we talking about? Are we talking about a few trees? Are we talking about a lot of trees in addition to the PSW?
Okay, it would be, there is a buffer identified around that PSW, and that's a specific, you know, area that would be zoned EPA. But in addition to that, there are some hedgerows on the property that would be analyzed as part of that, you know, prior to development. Unfortunately, I don't have an area.
Okay. Regarding the buffer, that was one of my next questions. It's only 10 meters, and I was wondering why it was small in comparison to some other ones that we look at, 20 or 30. Why only 10 meters?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the buffer is actually a maintenance buffer around that PSW. The actual buffer to the PSW, which was required to be a minimum of 15 meters, is within the PSW block. And so that buffer is actually in some places, it's much greater than 15 meters. The actual PSW is regular in shape in that PSW block.
Okay, thank you. One final question, and then I have some comments later on. A resident pointed me towards the Dropbox on our city's website, and I've seen the Dropbox before, but there's a folder for each of our planning matters, and there's tons of files in there, and they're files that not necessarily we see in our documents. There's one document in there. It's the email, October 14th, Julie Hannah, and on page seven and eight, and I'm wondering if this has been amended or if this is still accurate. It says, "Regional staff have reviewed the submitted Chippewa East subdivision storm water management report prepared by RV Anderson Associates dated July 30, 2021. The storm water management plan has been significantly altered from the Chippewa East subdivision storm water management report prepared by the RV Anderson Associates dated July 2020. That was previously reviewed by regional staff. Specifically, the two storm water management ponds have eliminated from the current plan, which instead proposes the installation of underground storage," and I know you did talk about underground storage, "dry pond and oil grit separators to provide storm water quantity and quality control. The plan also adds another two outlets with the development discharging in the north drain, Usher Creek, Sodom Road, ditch, and Hunter Drain. Regional staff note that the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation, and Parks indicates oil grit separators are typically used for small drainage areas less than two hectares. The preliminary engineering figures show a 28-hectare development that will be serviced by three oil grit separator units. Regional staff are concerned with the elimination of the storm water management ponds, which are normally installed for a significant residential development of this size. Regional staff will require more information to understand the water treatment mechanism of the proposed module storage. Additional preliminary comments regarding the revised storm water management plan are included in Appendix 4." Now, what you talked about earlier, does that address this, or is this still outstanding?
Okay, the region of, through you, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, the region of Niagara, to address that concern, under Condition Number 72, which is on page 27 of the report, they've provided a condition that needs to be met prior to registration of any phase, and they need to review and approve a storm water management plan. They need to get the appropriate approvals from the Ministry of the Environment under the Condition Number 70, and that's to address that concern.
Okay, so if I have it right, the region said they had concerns prior, but your report now is saying, under Number 72, that that's addressing those concerns?
Yep. Provided, through you, Mr. Mayor, provided that condition is implemented, the conditions are approved, that would be required.
Okay, so two more comments. Does this also consider the Legends Estate across the street? Because both of these are part of Usher's Creek wetland. So if you have a development across the street that takes into consideration the amount of people and houses, and now there's this one, is all of this being considered for this particular wetland?
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure the study that were done was specific to the development.
Okay, and then just one final comment, and then I'll make comments later. Your presentation that we received just now, I would have liked to have seen it earlier. It wasn't on our agenda unless I missed it. If there was addition, I didn't get it, and there was a lot of verbiage in it I would have liked to have read to understand this because I'm asking you stupid questions right now, and I apologize, but I would have liked to have seen it ahead of time. Thank you.
Any other questions of council for Mr. Bryce? Okay. Excuse me. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Land Tribunal dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to notify the city clerk to preserve their opportunity to appeal will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Counsel will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed draft plan and bylaw amendment. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, Your Worship, we have five registered members of the public. You can follow along on your list, and we could start with Keith McKinnon. We're just, again, reminding the residents that they would have five minutes or less to make their comments, please.
Oh, starting with Mike? Pupalo?
Good evening.
Hello, Mike.
Hi, how are you doing?
Very good, very good, thank you, and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Worship and council. I'll keep my comments brief because it looks as though you have a packed agenda, and we're already past 7:30, so I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. My name is Mike Pupalo, and I'm here representing Polycorp Inc., who owns 9234 Sodom Road, which is on the east side of Sodom Road and flanked on three sides by the DG Group that the application is for you tonight, on the northeast and south side. My company, Polycorp Inc., is a land development company with focus on greenfield development. We are currently going through the planning process on our site at 9234 Sodom Road as well. I would just like to note that we've had many productive meetings with the DG Group over the past several years and have found them very accommodating in their plans and road networks for our development to integrate our plan into theirs. As a result, Polycorp is in support of DG Group's plan and the request for zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of subdivision approval in terms of lay of intensity. We have the utmost confidence that we and DG Group can work hand-to-hand to integrate our development site into theirs and vice versa to make this community as seamless as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on our list, we've got Gary Beck. Is he on the line, Mr. Holtley? He is. Mr. Beck, are you with us? Okay, Mr. Beck, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine now, that's great. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Welcome, council and mayor. We, I'm on here behalf of my fellow neighbors, on behalf of them, so I'm going to get to the point. We object to the proposed draft plan and the zoning bylaw amendment on the following grounds. Intense use proposed within townhouse blocks, medium-density, R4 semi-detached homes, and small lots, single-family homes will undoubtedly load an infrastructure that can't handle the existing water and waste disposable. Right now, residents in the area are suffering from basements being flooded already. Also, the increase and decrease in the lots, that's going to take away people's sunlight for the neighbors as well. I don't see a sun study that was done or nothing in this development. The need for open space water storage is indecisive of the problem. It is unclear to the location and the effect it will have on the provincial significant wetland and the existing infrastructure lack of capacity. The application unnecessary requests, reduce lot, reduce frontage, increased height, revise frontage interpretation, and the permitted tangent parking to R3 zoning and includes an R4 zoning, these unnecessarily intensifies the use of the property and its effects on the neighborhood. The other one here is the intensity of the proposed use in the open stormwater storage will devalue neighboring properties. The rezoning should be limited to an R1 zone use instead, and adaptive provisions needs to be made for the infrastructure. Also, the size of this development is overkill, is just outrageous. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holtley, do we have Stanley Hickey? Yes? Mr. Hickey, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm here to present a petition this evening that was signed by 564 residents, yeah, Chippewa. I've since had 10 more come my way. We kind of got snafu'd by weather, and we didn't get out at least 400, and we know at least 1,000 more people, or I should say, homes or residents, we didn't even get a chance to go and drop anything off because of the fact that they now have community mailboxes. Now, part of the reason, excuse me, part of the reason that I did this petition was that there was very little transparency when it came to the meeting in September. That's why it was so small as far as attendance is concerned. If you're going to ask us to accept a potential of 900-plus vehicles out under a street, I think that's a problem for all of Chippewa, not for the people who just live around the perimeter of that particular area. And so I've had to do this. I mean, 120 meters that you use on that is ridiculous under the circumstance of what you're asking us to agree here to, and it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. The traffic study, and if we look at what happened with this particular development, it started off at 745, it's now risen to 926. You just had a gentleman on who's going to add another 65. Now we're pushing 1,000, you know, potential homes onto this area. There's a traffic study that is missing as far as the developer is concerned, and that is the one coming out from Stanley Avenue at Lyons Creek Road. I did send over a study that had to be done because of a death of an animal as well as a major accident. Well, I shouldn't say it's major, but a woman blew three of her tires out because she was out of control coming around the corner to come out. That study by the city traffic department showed over a nine-day period that there was nine, over 9,000 cars went down that little stretch of road. That's 1,000 cars a day, and that's their words, not mine, that means, and that's a merged situation. Those cars are all coming out of the new subdivision, which is Chippewa West. I had numerous signatures on my petitions from people who live on Willack Road that are in the brand-new houses there. They don't want to see any more cars going down the street. You have that situation going on. The affordability of this circumstance here is ridiculous. We have a condo that's being built, River Walk, which, by the way, is still full of water that hasn't been addressed. Their one-bedroom condos are going out at $700,000. Where is the money coming from that? You know, for the people that live in the region, when you look at the averages of what people are making here, they're not making that kind of money, though we're asking people from outside to come in and take housing away from us because they're the only ones that can seem to afford it. And it's simpler for them to commute, excuse me, commute, quite frankly, because it's cost-efficient for them to do so. Putting a bus into that area is part of the carbon footprint. Nobody takes a bus here. They just don't. It doesn't work for them. We have a main street hub where women are being solicited there while they're waiting. Young kids don't want to stand there because their parents don't want them there. It doesn't work. If I have to jump in a bus to go to Niagara Square, it's going to take me 25 minutes, and that's not talking the amount of time I have to walk to a bus stop, which I actually have one at the end of my street, and I have another one at the end of a side street that's very close to me here as well. The buses often sell, both these buses are often sitting and waiting because they have no passengers on them, and that became very much a case in point last January when we had the Water Main Break on Sodom Road, putting everybody on the Betty Side of Sodom Road without water for 15 hours. And thankfully, it happened overnight, but nonetheless, it still went on to 1:30 in the afternoon. I got all that traffic overnight, and I was stunned at how much there was even overnight, and during the day, it was crazy, and all I could think was, how many of these people are now going to use my side street as a way of detouring? Basically, what's going to happen is you're going to have all this traffic eventually pour out onto Sodom Road and Lyons Creek. People are already rerouting, they're taking that rural route out the back of Willack over Ork and Rexinger to Stanley. That comes out on a three-way, or a T-junction, sorry, with a three-way stop. People barrel out through there. I've seen it happen. They don't even stop when they get to Stanley Avenue to turn out on there, and there's going to be a major accident. Tonight, what I'm also hearing is about employment land. That's going to put more traffic out there. We're talking about Oakland's and their aspect of putting things in. You are going to block us in, you are going to virtually cut us off, and every time that council has something come up from a cloud road, you are blocking us off from an access because you're putting more traffic out there. At some point, we are actually going to have to use Sodom Road. At some point, we are actually going to have to use Sodom Road to go out to the highway in order to come into Niagara Falls. We're just going to be cut off, and the idea of putting traffic signals at some of these locations is ludicrous because all it's going to do is back people up, and there again, they will reroute themselves. And it's just nuts thinking about that.
Ms. Hickey, your five minutes are up, if you could just kind of finish up?
I will quickly do that. The environmental concern I have here, it needs to be addressed. The hedgerows are gone, Mr. Bryce, I have to tell you, when they did their scrapings, they took those out. That was an area where a major concern, because there are birds that are very much a concern of risk at this particular time. I don't even know what to say here about this. The whole thing is ridiculous from start to finish, and I'd like to invite members of council, and any one of them can contact me directly and come out here and actually take a look at what's going on. Because when you start seeing that corner of Lions Creek and Sodom Road in particular, and you said no last year to a 77-unit building going up there, and now you're asking us to take on 680 just on the Sodom Road side, and that's not including that 246 potential going out onto Willoughby Drive. The whole thing is just absolute nonsense, and people here, if you think they're upset about this and you start working on what's going to happen at Oakland's, you're going to have a riot on your hands. There was people who wanted to come and protest outside of City Hall today, they wanted to know why they couldn't get into Gallery, and you've seen what's happened in the past when Chippewa comes to the Gallery. It spills out down the hall and out the stairs and wherever. So, you know, you really have to take a look at this and say, does this really work? I appreciate that this is a growth plan, but the growth plan is also asking for affordable housing, and affordable housing for who? I mean, you have to redefine what affordable housing is. If you're not making 100 grand a year, you can't buy a half a million dollar house, and I can guarantee you that none of the homes that are going in here will be in that price range. They'll all be beyond that. Even the Silvergate legends, they start at $700,000, and they're very small, and I guess you guys should come out and look at them. One individual here in town has designated it the ghetto, another one calls it the barracks.
Ma'am, we've got to wrap it up here.
Yep, that's fine. But anyways, I hope that you reconsider the amount of housing that's going on here. It's just ridiculous.
All right, thank you very much, thank you. Next?
I'm going to speak to the petition.
Oh, yeah, the clerk now is going to speak to the petition that was part of this submission.
Yeah, so thank you, your worship. Just before we get to the last member of the public who wanted to speak for the public meeting, I just wanted to remind council that it was just in October of this year that council passed amendments to their procedural bylaw with respect to implementing procedures around receiving petitions. And as Ms. Hickey just pointed out, she was the submitter of the petition that you'll see on your agenda. It is broken up into, I think, three parts on your agenda just because of the size. Petitions that relate to a matter listed on the council agenda, as I just mentioned, will appear as additional correspondence listed on the agenda. Petitions may be read into the record by stating the purpose of the petition and indicating how many relevant individuals have signed. And relevant, I'll come back to that, but it's meaning those who have listed both their name and local address. This is to avoid situation like we had previously in Chippewa where there were a number of people that signed the petition that were not local residents. So first of all, the name of the petition is called Stop the Intensification and Reduce the Build. We, the residents, we, the undersigned residents, families and friends of Chippewa, draw attention to the mayor and city council members to the development known as AM 2018-012 Chippewa East. We respectfully request that you decline the size of this development. This development in no way enhances the lives of those who live, visit, shop, or come to use our sports facilities, for example, golf, baseball, hockey, and the boat launch. Several items are of major concern. Some of those are as follows. Species at risk, there are many species at risk in Chippewa, and this land carries many of them. Good habitat is critical to our environment and a part of good climate management. With the PSW on this property, how well will it be properly protected or infringed upon? The other major concern is the increased volume of traffic, which is already happening, so much so that many of our residents now use neighborhood streets to back roads to bypass, or and back roads to bypass our two main intersections. This is creating safety problems in other locations. Several accidents have already occurred, how many more is acceptable? Our road structure cannot handle the increased pressure that this and future builds will create. We also require affordable housing for those who live in the Niagara region. Therefore, we call upon the mayor and the city council members to vote no to this development's size and reduce it dramatically. So, thank you for your patience there. Since the procedures did state that it should be read into the record, I thought it was worth reading that initial page of the petition. As mentioned, the relevant number of signatures within the petition, I have counted at 497. Again, relevant meaning those who have their name and local addresses to the petition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Dubrowski has a question?
I'm Siri, you're virtual.
Through you. Is Ms. Hickey still on the line or no? Did we lose her? Sean?
No.
Pardon?
Jessica.
A question through the mayor to Ms. Hickey. Just looking at the-
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, great, hi. Looking at the petition, and I'm not trying to be funny, but out of the names listed, I see municipalities Niagara Falls, Chippewa, St. Catharines, a firm few in between from Toronto. The ones that mention Niagara Falls, are they, are some of those in Chippewa, are we looking at just, or is it a mix, or do you know? I'm just trying to get a gauge of-
It's, okay, it's going to be a mix of things, just so you're aware of that. Considering the fact that we do not use the term Chippewa as our mailing address and it asks for an address, that's why you see that.
Okay.
But you also have to, one thing you have to appreciate about that, and there's a comment that was just made about how many numbers were actually there.
Yep.
My daughter lives in a northern Ontario town called Atticopan today. She signed the online petition, it states that, I believe, and there's a number of people who have friends and family who come here all the time, and they are just as impacted as those who live here because they're coming and going. It says family, it says residence, it says friends on there, and that encompasses lots. You're not, you're seeing people who come in and out. One of the people who put the petitions out lives here and lives in Toronto, half and half.
Gotcha.
And so you have to appreciate that aspect of it.
For sure, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to-
I understand where the problem arises here, and I know last year when the one petition came out, and when you look at, that was the same scenario. If my daughter had to sign that at that particular time, you would have seen a Cambodian address-
No problem.
-attached to it because that's where she was.
Yeah, I guess-
At that particular time. I think what I want to say too is that two of the people who volunteered to put out petitions were brand-new people here in the last couple of years. I have a neighbor across the street that just moved in here three months ago, I guess now.
Thanks.
They were absolutely exasperated when they found out that they were going to have this development here because they left where they were to get away from these kind of developments. And that's what we're hearing from a lot of the new people that live here, and it doesn't matter if they're in the new development or they bought an existing home in an older section.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate the insight, I was just, I guess looking at the-
No, I get it, I get it, no problem.
Yeah, looking at the sample size, trying to gauge a percentage of how many were actually from Chippewa, so, no, I appreciate the details, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have our next speaker, do we have Ryan Elliott there?
Yes.
Okay, Ryan Elliott, Mr. Elliott, are you there?
Hello, hello, do you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine, welcome to the meeting.
Okay, hello, I'm Ryan Elliott, I'm from Niagara Falls. Overall, I do overall like the plan, although I do feel like it could use like some improvements. I do like that there are actual townhouses and duplexes, although I was a bit disappointed that there were just like, what, 28 or so duplexes compared to a single-family home, since duplexes do hold more people. And I do live on a street where there are a lot of duplexes, so I was kind of sad, and I do think overall that that definitely could use a bit more variety, like courtyard buildings for those who don't want like a backyard or something like that, or, now, I wasn't quite sure with like the medium residential area of like what was going to be in there, but I don't think I hear anything about like mixed-use development, which could definitely like help service the area. For those who, you know, who don't want to drive halfway across town to get groceries, they can just like, or do basic things, they can just like walk, I think would be definitely a very big benefit, benefit. And I think like the last thing I was thinking of was, I do, yeah, I don't know what would be like the public transportation to the new area, but I do think overall that higher, you know, frequency, more than just like once an hour, hour bus ride is definitely needed, like maybe like around 15 at most, maybe 20 minutes, I think would be preferable, which could then help get people out of cars and then into buses, meaning they have less accidents, and overall a better, it could maybe down the road lead to like, you know, more routes and that sort of thing.
Okay, so you're asking, yeah, so maybe staff can just address the frequency, when, at what point, and I don't know if Carla Stout is there, at what point do you look at adding frequency or routes for transit when development takes place? Do we have, or I don't know if Carla, if you could answer that, or Andrew, or who would answer that? Hello?
Through you.
Yep, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I was supposed to say, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think Carla Stout is on the line.
Okay, great, Carla, welcome to the meeting. No audio, we can't hear you, Carla? No, no, you know what, you might have to sign out and sign back in again. Or phone in, yeah.
Or hold you.
Yeah. We're getting at your sketch, yeah.
I'm okay in waiting. Definitely very interesting, my first time doing a council meeting, very interesting.
Hope we don't disappoint you.
Oh, it's been interesting.
So we're going to get you an answer. Carla's going to be phoning in, and then we'll get you an answer to your transit questions.
Okay.
Does Carla have the phone number? Here we go.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah, there we go. We can hear you fine now, Carla.
That's great, thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the requester or the presenter, I guess.
Yeah, Mr. Elliott, yeah.
Mr. Elliott, how this kind of plays into our planning, is this plays into our five-year strategic plan update for transit? Chippewa West and East are indicated in not only that plan for future transit service, but also are calculated through our development charges for buses to be added onto either existing routes or new routes in that area. Frequencies of service are always added as they're necessitated, so as ridership grows in an area where it is developed, we would be looking at, you know, increasing service or increasing stops, much like we did with Warren Woods Garner Estates and a number of other developments just this past September when we did our expansion and rerouting of buses in the city.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Elliott?
Yes, overall, at least, that is definitely nice to hear. I've always did want Niagara Falls to get like definitely a higher, you know, either like higher frequency and maybe down the road, like higher, more bus lines, although I always did kind of wish maybe Niagara Falls kind of add train, like add trams, because I know Niagara Falls did use up trams and could definitely like tap into that, to that. I was always felt like one line I was always, could have been interesting is between going Chippewa all the way down along the river down to the transit station could be a very interesting line, get people like to and from the area and also downtown. It was just something I always thought of.
Okay, okay, that's great. Well, thank you for that, Carla, thank you for joining the call, and Ms. Elliott, thank you for your feedback.
No problem.
Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening, your worship, members of council, hopefully you can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Great. My name is Keith McKinnon, I'm with KLM Planning Partners, Inc., here before you this evening on behalf of Queensway Chippewa Properties, Inc. I did not prepare a presentation because Mr. Bryce obviously went through a very detailed presentation, so I'm certain you would not want to hear me repeat exactly what Mr. Bryce has already gone through. Certainly appreciate the comments that have been raised through our neighborhood meetings and then also through the public meeting this evening. As Mr. Bryce noted, we did file our application back in April 25th of 2018, so we've been at this process for quite some time in terms of defining developable limits, dealing with regional staff, MNRF, NPCA, and obviously town staff and the various departments to ultimately come to the plan that is before council this evening. So with that, your worship, I'm really just here to answer any questions that might be raised, but we are certainly supportive of staff's recommendation that's been outlined in their detailed staff report. Thank you.
All right, that's great, thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Do we have any questions for Mr. McKinnon of council? Okay, seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Looking for a motion from council. Yes, Counsel Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, we've seen a lot of, you know, the petition and emails from people in Chippewa, and I feel for them because they are frustrated, they feel like they're, like Niagara on the Lake was a few years ago, they feel like they're losing their little town, the people from Toronto and coming, and they're calling it Toronto on the lake now, not even Niagara on the Lake. And Chippewa is kind of the same, they feel that they're losing their little hometown village, you know, they only have one grocery store, traffic's concerned, sanitary's concerned, but this is something that's inside urban boundary and it's with our official plan. If I lived in Chippewa, I wouldn't want it here either, I wouldn't want to live next to it. But in, can I get an opinion, if somehow this got turned down and it went to LPAD, whether it's the CAO or Andrew Bryce, how fast would this get overturned?
So, Mr. Bryce, did you want to handle that question? So, so with the positive staff recommendation, if council didn't support it, what would the Ontario Land Tribunal typically, how would it typically handle it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the decision would be made by the Ontario Land Tribunal. I just want to note that if council did turn down the subdivision, the zoning, the applicant would have the right to appeal the decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. I just want to quickly add that the land, an official plan amendment is not required. The land is designated residential environmental protection area, and that does permit the proposed development.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm going to go to our CAO to answer the question about what's the likely outcome if this were to go to the Ontario Land Tribunal, Mr. Burgess?
Well, I'm not a planner and I'll, you know, leave it, and we don't like to throw hypotheticals out there, but the challenge is if you turn it down, you have to turn it down for a planning reason. Staff have already supported this, and so if council turned it down, council would actually have to find a planner, independent from our own staff, to defend their opinion, and if there's not a solid planning opinion to turn it, you know, to force the turn down, you're likely to, A, not get a planner to support you at the tribunal, and B, lose the appeal. So what I think our planning team has done is brought it in compliance with, you know, good planning standards, and therefore it's, you know, that's why it's recommended on that basis.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to get across to, you know, I know there's a lot of passionate people in Chippewa, and we don't want them storming down the doors of City Hall, but, you know, it's, it is good planning, and even though it's tough for us, and because we feel the passion of Chippewa, but, you know, this is something that would, if we even turn it down, it would get overturned, it would just cause a delay and probably give us bigger headaches in the end. So I just, you know, I feel for the Chippewa residents, but it's something that, you know, like I said, if I was beside it or around it, you know, I would like to see obviously more another grocery store, there's only two schools there, I think there's Sacred Heart and Riverview, I believe. You know, so there's going to have to be some plans in the future to put, whether it's a school or, you know, another grocery store, because I feel like they're feeling the influx from especially Toronto, because Chippewa was a hidden gem before, but the secret is out, and, you know, it's great that people want to move down here and pay taxes, but people are, want to come down, want a nice place, and Chippewa is a perfect place to live, but I feel for the residents there.
Did you want to make, are you making a motion? Are you- Did you want to make, are you making a motion, or are you, okay, Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. In my limited experience as a council member, I've come to realize that going to the LPAT depends on how staff approach this. I don't think that we as a council should be making decisions on what staff are saying, they should give us options to make the decision yes or no, but it's already been said, they support it, I'd like to see a change in that. Following up on Counselor Strange's comments, I would like to support the application, but only if and when all the conditions that have been laid out are completed. The reason I say that, we're giving them three years, there's gonna be a new council in here, things are gonna change, they're gonna come and ask for this requirement to be minimized even further, maybe we get a little closer to the, the, the wetlands? So if, if we're gonna support this, I want to make a condition that it not be allowed to start until all the conditions that have been addressed financially and put into place, because ever since I've been on council, Chippewa's had a flooding problem, and we're trying to say that the system in Niagara Falls on Saddle Road is, is sufficient? It's never been sufficient, it's a serious problem, and I think that we need to, in light of the fact that they've already said, they recommend this, we need to make sure that the residents in the city, in Chippewa, are not affected in the long run. Everything that is recommended has to be taken place, it has to be performed before they can start developing.
Okay, thank you for that, I've got Counselor Dubrowski, Ainoni, and Lakoko.
Yeah, we have a big challenge here, this is the second development that's come before us tonight, that we're discussing, and we can't, every time a development comes forward and staff suggests that, they make recommendations, we can't keep on going back to what would LPAT do, or what if, or what's happening. I, I think we have a bigger challenge, rather than just this one specific proposal, and that's the town of Chippewa, and making sure that residents are heard, whether that be through ongoing open houses, Chippewa sometimes does get forget, forgotten, it's out in the south end, not everybody reads the newspaper, not everybody goes on the city's website to find out what's happening, so maybe we can increase their communication, but I have a hard time not supporting this, because it follows all provincial guidelines, it fits within our city, city official plan, and there is growth, like Counselor Strange said, it's no secret that people are coming to Chippewa, and developers are coming to Chippewa, and they're looking for land, and they're looking to build, and, and the population as the region outlined is, is going to double by 2041 or 2051, so it's no secret that these developments are going to come into Chippewa. So, like Counselor Strange mentioned, you know, I feel for the residents of Chippewa, I live in Chippewa, I know there's only one grocery store, and there's one little dance studio for young children to go to, it's, it's a small town, but if the strategy is to grow Chippewa into a, a bigger city, and to develop more houses and more affordable housing, and to bring in further grocery stores, and to develop that town, then we need to, to strategize and look towards that, but every time a proposal comes in front of us, I don't want to be discussing this and wondering what LPAT would do, or wondering if staff will recommend it, or if they're not recommending it, so, either way, I feel for the residents of Chippewa that are against it, I'm looking at the petition, it's, it's a long list, but at the same time, I mean, if, if the question around the table is, well, what if we go against it, will it get overturned, then we're just delaying the process, so if council around the table strongly believes this is a good fit for Chippewa, and the infrastructure in place is sufficient, then we should vote for it, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you for that, I've got Counselor Ainoni, Lakoko, and Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no problem saying I don't think that this application fits Chippewa. I've heard they think they're losing their small community, they don't think it, they are losing their small community. We keep approving huge applications, and I keep thinking that's probably the last one, and more come, and as more come, we, we are hearing from residents who are lifetimers in Chippewa, tell us their sewer water system is not adequate, we, we minimize that and say, yes, it is, we've done a ton of work, but, I mean, we don't live in their houses, our houses are not flooding, and theirs are, and they feel let down that we have not managed to fix that, but we keep increasing development out there. I don't believe that the existing infrastructure can hold this new development, and I really don't like the fact that there is more than seventy-two recommendations, and I say that very sincerely, because that's what happened at Paradise, and they weren't even recommendations, we thought those things had to be fulfilled before the building happened, and then they just happened to be, I can't even remember the terminology, they weren't conditions, they were recommendations, I'm sorry. Ms. Hick, in her, Stanley Hick in the email to us talked about species at risk, no wonder we have coyotes running down the middle of Montrose Road, we are displacing all of the wildlife, Chippewa is, people in Chippewa are forever posting pictures of fox and coyotes with cats, or keep your animals in because they're out on the street, the coyotes are out of the streets, why? Because we keep just taking down the wild, the green space, and they just move into where we're building. I don't think six, five hundred and sixty-four residents is inconsequential, and I hate the argument that, oh, we'll lose it LPAT, they want somebody to represent them, who will take a stand. Counselor Campbell said in his lit, jokingly, in his limited experience as a counselor, well, most of us have been around this table twenty-five years or more, and at the end of the day, we represent the residents, not the developers, and we aren't listening to the residents who are speaking to us now, I think they could easily have gotten a thousand more signatures. My day today was taken up by call after call after call after call of residents from Chippewa, not talking about they don't believe in development, but talking about how our, the infrastructure as it is now does not accommodate what's sitting there as is. We, we don't, we have hundred-year storms every couple months now, so planning on a hundred-year storm, it's not gonna happen again, is, is asinine right now because of climate change, why do we have climate change? Because we take down every ounce of green space we can. So I just want to say, I'm, I'm gonna vote against this, I think it's too big, I, I think the neighbors are depending on us to, to not overbuild, and I think this is extremely overbuilding, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Lakoko, then Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I look at development, I always try to look at a balanced approach, and I don't think that this is balanced, and then I think about, okay, well, what would LPAT do, or OLT, or whatever they're called now, and I think about, okay, there needs to be planning arguments. To me, not having the proper infrastructure that can't handle wet weather circumstances is a planning matter, so to me, that is a planning matter, whether it's flooding, wet weather, not having just single-family homes, having different apartments, that's a planning matter, we heard that we have to expand our choices about living, affordable housing, that is a planning matter. Traffic, that's a planning matter as well, I, I definitely see an issue with tra, traffic. Species at risk, we've talked about that, everybody's getting run out of where they are, and they're running into the middle of the streets, you're seeing coyotes and foxes. Tandem parking, I don't agree with tandem parking in areas, because then that's overflow on the streets, and then we, we create more problems. There's already been a bunch of trees cut down, we just heard today that the hedge rows were there, and now they're not there, trees are getting cut down even before we, we get the proposal, and I am concerned about the PSW that's there, so for all of those reasons, I will not be voting for it, I think we need to look at the proposal and scale it down, this is just way too big for this area, and the infrastructure in Chippewa cannot handle it.
Thank you, we got Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. With respect to Counselor Dubrowski's comments, I can't remember once a development that came through the planning department, he talked about requirements, our requirements, and so we say thirty feet, well, they come and ask for twenty feet, and staff says, okay, and we need to have a certain set of guidelines that we go by, not letting staff be manipulated, not allowing them to overbuild, and I agree, this isn't overbuilt, it wouldn't be as high as it is if we kept the same distances with respect to side yards and backyards and all those other things. So I, I'm not gonna support it unless that condition, and I have a sense that it's gonna get passed tonight, if the motion's made, I'm gonna make an emotion to guarantee that the, all the requirements be completed before they start to build.
Motion? Yeah, a motion? Is that a motion?
Okay, I'm gonna make that a motion, I'm gonna say, yeah, I'm gonna pass this, I, I have a sense it's gonna get passed anyways, but the, the motion is that addition, that all those conditions must be met before any development can take place.
Wayne, does that, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, Wayne, does that include any trees cut down, because I talked to one resident today who said that they were cutting trees at twelve o'clock at night, so are you talking about not another tree cut either until those conditions are met?
Um, I, I would hope that that is the intent of that motion.
So, do we need some clarity from our CAO?
Yes.
There's seventy-six requirements, Mr. CAO, how might this motion play out?
I'll rely on my planning team also, my concern with the motion, Counselor, is that some of the requirements are things to be monitored, and if what they actually see is happening, then there's a requirement for an improvement, so you can't make those improvements until, you know, it's already, it's been built, and, you know, sometimes they do that to say, well, if it, you know, if your engineering reports were off, we're gonna, you know, make you correct it, and, so, you know, I think that was the issue with the servicing and some of the traffic items were, were to be monitored, and I think there's a period of time for corrective action, but I'll, I'll let, you know, the planners make comment on that, because I, I don't think you can make some of those conditions to be met, because they're, they're meant to be met after the, you know, after the actual construction.
If I could comment?
The problem is, it's a three-year period, and if those conditions can't be met, they come back and ask for further reductions, and we cave in, because staff recommends it, so, I, I withdraw my motion, I'm gonna oppose it.
Okay, okay, so, do we have any questions or clarification anyone needs, excuse me?
So I'd like a recorded vote, please.
Well, there's no motion, what do you want to record the vote on? There's no motion.
So when there's a motion, I'd like it recorded.
Oh, okay, all right, we can do that for you.
Yeah, see here.
I move, we make a, we decline.
Okay, motion by Counselor?
A second.
Campbell to decline, seconded by Counselor Ainoni.
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote, Mr. Clerk?
Magic.
Is there a reason?
Is there a reason? Yeah, because she likes to have everything on the, on the books, yeah.
Oh, no, no, what I meant was...
Yeah, Your Worship, I thought Mr. Burgess already said that in order for a planning, I guess, report to be declined, we have to give some type of planning decisions as to why we would be declining it.
Yeah, because if not, they're just gonna turn this around, go to the OLT, and they're gonna win it, and they're gonna be back here later in the year saying thank you, so, Mr. Burgess, Mr. Burgess is the floor.
Yeah, through the chair, you know, council can make the motion as it sees fit, I think once it's declined, if the developer then chooses to appeal council's decision, council will then have to engage a planner to develop planning reasons for the, for the decline, so I don't think you have to have it as part of this motion, but I think at some point in time, you should anticipate coming up with those reasons, and the, and your planner would have to, you'd have to communicate that with your planner.
Any other questions?
No, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I can, I can answer for myself as to why I want a recorded vote, I don't appreciate that kind of sarcastic response from you to, as to why, I knew what the question was about, it wasn't about me, but I don't need to make any comment about that, thank you.
Thanks for clearing that up, thank you.
There's no motion.
So there's, there's a motion on the floor now, motion for denial by Counselor, Counselor Campbell, so we have a request for a recorded vote, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Campbell?
In favor.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Opposed.
Counselor Ainoni?
Sorry, in favor.
Counselor Curio is absent, Counselor Lakoko?
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
No.
Counselor Strange?
Opposed.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
And Mayor Diodati?
Opposed.
That motion is defeated.
Okay, yeah, we're looking for another motion.
I need to support the recommendation.
Okay, motion by Counselor Dubrowski to support the recommendation, we're looking for a seconder.
Who doesn't want to get reelected again?
I thought that's, that's not how you make that, those decisions. So, we're, we've got a motion on the floor, do we have a seconder?
I will, of course.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo.
Recorded vote, please.
Of course. Recorded vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, the motion is now to approve the recommendations in the report, Counselor Campbell?
Opposed.
Are we just gonna use the same sheet? Counselor Dubrowski?
Four.
Counselor Ainoni?
I'm just, I'm hearing.
Counselor Ainoni?
Sorry, opposed.
Counselor Curio is absent, Counselor Lakoko?
Opposed.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yes.
Counselor Strange?
In favor.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
And Mayor Diodati?
Four.
And that motion carries.
Thank you. Let me do this one back. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit the conversion of the existing hotel and motel into an apartment building with one hundred and twenty-two dwelling units, and to rezone the abutting significant wood lot, I'm sorry, woodland, and associated buffer in the southwest part of the property to the Environmental Protection Area Zone. This is located at seventy-two eighty Lundys Lane. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment, to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal, shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I now ask Mr. Bryce if he could explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the applicant is five zero zero nine eight five six Ontario, Inc., property is located on the south side of Lundys Lane, opposite Royal Manor Drive, adjacent to the Queen Elizabeth Way, the property is surrounded by undeveloped land to the south, commercial uses along Lundys Lane, and detached dwellings to the north of the tourist commercial corridor. Next, this is the, the site plan, basically it is an existing building that is being converted to the apartment dwelling. Next, the property is one point two six hectares in area, the zoning amendment is requested to permit the conversion of the existing hotel and motel into an apartment building with one hundred and twenty-two rental dwelling units. Land is zoned tourist, commercial, prestige, industrial, in part. Applicant is requesting land be rezoned a site-specific tourist commercial zone to add the apartment dwelling as a permitted use, to recognize the height of the existing building, which is seventeen meters, and finally to decrease parking requirements for a dwelling to one point two five parking spaces per dwelling unit. A small part of the land is requested to be rezoned environmental protection area to, to protect a significant woodland. If you go to the next slide, please, so the small area in the southwest is proposed to be environmental protection area... So the small area in the southwest is proposed to be environmental protection area. That, the woodland actually extends to the south of the, of the subject lands, and it's just a small part of it that extends onto the, the area that's requested to be rezoned. Next, neighborhood open house was held on September 21st. There were no members of the public that attended, nor have we received any written comments. Next, planning analysis, provincial policies, the, the smaller studio units in the development will add housing options for residents, and this, you know, is supported by provincial policies and that range of housing options are to be provided. The planning justification report that was submitted with the application indicated the units are intended to be affordable to low- to moderate-income households. Proposed development is transit-supportive, will assist the city in meeting its intensification target, and contributes to the creation of a complete community while protecting natural heritage features. And finally, the recommended regulations will facilitate the redevelopment of a land in a manner that results in a compact form. Moving on to official plan, the lands are designated tourist, commercial, residential, and environmental protection area. The proposed residential development is permitted within the tourist, commercial designation and assists in the creation of a complete community. Proposed development will adaptively reuse the existing five-story hotel and two-story motel to provide 122 dwelling units. Permitted density of 120, 102 units per hectare would be provided. The abutting significant woodland, which is mainly off the property and associated buffer, will be protected. The building will maintain a built-form presence along Lundys Lane. And finally, the retention of the restaurant building, which is on the west side of the, of the hotel motel, will provide employment opportunities and will not conflict with the residential use. Moving on, zoning bylaw, the property is zoned TC in part and prestige industrial in part. The, where the buildings are located is actually tourist, commercial. The applicant is requesting the existing hotel, motel, and restaurant be rezoned a site-specific TC zone. The TC zone actually already permits dwelling units up to a maximum of 50% of the total floor area of the building. Next, requested zoning regulations would ask, would add a apartment dwelling as permitted use, would recognize the existing height at 17 meters, and would reduce requirements for parking from 1.4 to 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit. Next, the requested regulations can be supported for the following reasons. Proposed apartment use will provide a new housing option for residents. Requested maximum height of the building is the current building height. There's no changes that are proposed to the current built form. And finally, the proposed parking supply is supported by transportation services staff. Parking needs will be provided at an appropriate rate for the dwelling units and for the restaurant. Next, the applicant is requesting a small portion of the existing significant woodland and associated buffer, which is actually within the area to be rezoned, to be placed under an environmental protection area zone. A record of site condition is, is expected to be filed with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks in the near future. The R C is required to change the use from a commercial hotel and motel to a purely residential use. Since the building is existing and no structural or below-grade changes are being proposed, staff are satisfied that a holding regulation is not necessary to secure the filing of the R C. The R C will be required to be filed prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant is filing a site plan application to address the change in use as the site is being developed, or a site is developed, I'm sorry. This is expected to deal primarily with such matters as lighting details, landscape enhancements, and waste disposal. The amending zoning bylaw will be need, will be required to come into effect prior to approval of any site plan drawings. In conclusion, the proposed development conforms to provincial policies as it intensifies the use of land within the built-up area of the city, will assist the city in meeting its intensification targets, will provide additional housing choices for residents, and will protect a, a small portion of the abutting significant woodland. Proposed development conforms with the city's official plan with respect to the density of the end-built form anticipated, and the requested TC zone permits dwelling units. As well, recommended regulations are appropriate to ensure the proposed development will be compatible with surrounding properties, and the requested EPA zone will ensure the protection of the significant woodland, which, which, which is on the, within the area to be rezoned and associated buffer. In recommend, in conclude, recommendation, I'm sorry, the council approved the zoning bylaw amendment application to rezone the lands a site-specific TC zone to permit the conversion of the existing hotel and motel into the apartment building with 122 dwelling units and to rezone the abutting significant woodland and associated buffer in the southwest part of the property to environmental protection area, subject to the regulations outlined in this report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bryce, do you have any questions for Mr. Bryce? Councillor La Coco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question regarding the heritage features in your presentation, is the heritage features the P S W, or is it something on the actual building of the hotel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is, is actually an abutting woodland. The, a small portion of the, the lands to the south are part of a woodland, and a small portion of that woodland encroaches into the area that's to be developed, or into the area that's part of the zoning bylaw. So that, that is the area that is recommended to be EPA.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm because sometimes heritage features are on a building, and that's why I was asking. And then my other question is, why a seven-meter buffer to the, the P S W?
I, I'm sorry?
Why a seven-meter buffer to the P S W? Usually, it's a larger.
Okay, I'm sorry. If, if you can bear with me for, for a minute.
It, it says it's a seven-meter buffer to that P S W, and usually, when we have P S Ws, like the, the previous report talked about a 10, and I know that there was a block, and then, then other developments are larger than seven. I'm just wondering why seven was picked.
Oh, yes, it's, yeah, the regional comments. It's the, it's a woodland as opposed to a P S W.
Okay.
And the, the region did review the application and were satisfied with the, the, the seven-meter buffer.
Okay, thank you. Those are all of my questions. I have some comments later. I think it's a great repurpose of a building. It's bringing low to moderate income levels, and I'd like to make a motion after we close the meeting.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Land Tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to notify the city clerk to preserve their opportunity to appeal will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, Your Worship, just one speaker, Mr. Ryan Elliott. He's no longer a rookie to the planning public meetings. If we could also ask that you just request that he, although it's repetitive, state his name and address for the record.
Mr. Elliott, are you available?
Uh, yes. Overall, okay, so overall, okay, so you're trying to reduce the parking lot unit size, correct?
Mr. Bryce, this one's for you. You're muted.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, what they're actually looking there, the units actually exist as, as hotel motel units. So they're looking to convert them to dwelling units. So basically, the, the units would remain the same, but they would be adding facilities that are associated with the dwelling units, such as, such as a kitchen and cooking facilities.
Okay, so sort of like rental or permanent, like, like rental use or property use, that sort of thing?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the applicant has intent, has indicated the intent to be rental accommodation.
Okay. Okay, okay, because I was kind of, I was just kind of like looking from like the map, and it looked like it was, okay, it looked like a lot of parking space or just a slight decrease of, yeah, for there's a slight decrease of unit space. I'll take it over any, I'll take any slight decrease of parking lot decrease. I don't like, I feel like parking lots are very much not very useful to the city. I, if I had to guess, they probably don't generate that much money. So any using it for anything else is, I would say definitely better than anything.
Any other questions, Mr. Elliott?
Uh, nothing, nothing else. The previous person answered my question about the bus thing, so that went takes, and also answered this question as well, definitely. So I don't think anything else at the moment.
Okay, so we're all good?
That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I hope it comes to more meetings.
Yep. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. I see Mr. Vacca on the list.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council.
Good evening, Rocky.
I'll be very brief. I did want to mention that we had a very collaborative process with your planning staff, with Mr. Bryce and Ms. Hannah. We were all steering in the same direction, which was, which was great. The only comment I want to make is, basically, we're creating 122 rental units through this application, much-needed rental units. And the beauty of this application is, we're not tearing down buildings to create rental units, we're not going through two years of planning and construction. Basically, we are repurposing an existing building, and in a matter of months, we will have accommodations for 122 persons. So, you know, I hope this is a trend that continues. I think everyone agrees that we have an abundance of hotel rooms in the city outside of the Falls View area, but we have a shortage of these types of units. So I hope other people jump on this bandwagon. I can tell you the banks are financing these types of projects much easier than motels and hotels. Those are my comments. I also have Corey Armfeldt from M P G Solutions, the land use planner, should you have any planning questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Vacca, thank you. We've got councillor Ianone.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I've had an opportunity to be in there. I think that adapting the units to many apartments is, is an affordable way to repurpose that hotel. I think they've done a great job, and when the meeting closes, I'd be happy to second councillor La Coco's motion.
Okay, is there any further questions or comments of council? Okay, seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Councillor La Coco? Or councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I would be happy to.
Oh, your microphone. Wayne, you got to put your.
I was meeting with Buffalo business people, and they came over and wanted a bill there. And it was a beautiful building, and eventually Vince Carrio bought it, and it's a great thing for an apartment, and I would be pleased to approve it.
Okay, thank you for that. Second then, is it going to be councillor, well, councillor, I know you wanted to second it, that's fine, seconded by councillor Ianone. You want to speak to it, councillor La Coco?
Sure, I'll second it, that's fine. I, I think it's a great proposal. We need more of these in the city. It's repurposing buildings, and it's bringing more affordable units into, into the city. So I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, councillor Dubrowski.
I'll bring it up maybe under new business, but, and Rocky mentioned it, a repurposing strategy, maybe. He, he mentioned all the motels, but I'm not sure if we have a prospectus through economic development, but maybe something we could look into down the road. But, yeah, great project.
Thank you for that. Councillor La Coco?
Sorry, one more thing, I forgot. If I can request that we have these presentations as part of our agenda, there's a lot of information in there that I would like to read before I got here. This, this one wasn't on the agenda as well. Thank you.
Direction to staff, thank you for that. Okay, so we will call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that. Okay, moving along. C A O 2021, Pastone Walk-In Mental Health Clinic for Youth in Niagara Falls. What's that? Well, we're, we're good. Moved by councillor Pietrangelo, seconded by councillor Thompson, that we approve the two recommendations. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Item 7.2, participatory budgeting. We've got three recommendations. Councillor La Coco?
I move the, the recommendation, thank you.
Okay, moved by councillor La Coco, seconded by councillor Dubrowski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Item 7.3, single-source approval. Moved by councillor Thompson, that council provide the authority of the C A O to engage Ernst &amp; Young on single-source basis within the previously approved budget limits for the enterprise resource planning. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you. Didn't we get a second? Oh, I'm sorry, seconded by councillor Strange. Item 7.4, approval of intern 2022 spending limits. Moved by councillor and budget chair Pietrangelo, seconded by councillor Campbell. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. 7.5, 2020 water fund and wastewater fund budget.
Receive for information.
Receive for information, moved by councillor Pietrangelo and budget chair, seconded by councillor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. 7.6, Fireman's Park tobogganing. There are two recommendations.
Move the recommendations.
Councillor Pietrangelo, move the recommendations. Yeah, yep, go ahead, councillor Dubrowski.
Yeah, I'm looking at the report, now I can't find it. There was something about, oh, here it is, temporary removal of disc golf. What, what is that? Like, remove it altogether?
Okay, Mr., Mr. Nichol.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Where the disc golf is in the zone of potential impact for sledders and tobogganers, we just need to remove or temporarily protect the apparatus, and then after the season, we'd reinstall the apparatus. I think there is only one or two holes that are in conflict.
Can we just relocate the, when you say apparatus, do you mean one of the holes?
Yes, it'd be one of the holes and one of the, the tees, I suppose. So we could look at a future permanent relocation status. Just for this year, we'd need to relocate that. We don't have the opportunity to work with the disc golf association on a proposed plan.
Was there much involved, Eric? I mean, it's, it's putting a pole in the ground kind of thing, right? Like, is there much?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not familiar, and I don't, I don't know how much disc golf, Mr. Nichol plays, but, yeah, if it's an apparatus that can simply be moved, kind of like a, a pin on a, on a golf green? I just would hate to take it away if, if people want to play in March or April, and they're waiting for us to, to reinstall it, let's just revise it rather than remove it.
The, the C A O is going to jump into, Eric.
Sorry, they, they can still play, they'll just be one hole short. So they'd still be playing, they're, we're just removing one hole temporarily for the tobogganing season. And then, as Mr. Nichol said, we're looking at changing the course layout so that it doesn't interfere in the future.
I, I don't know how disc golf works. The way I'm thinking, though, when I go golfing, if I only play 17 holes and don't get to play the 18th hole, I didn't play a full game. I know what disc golf is, but, either way, if there's a way we can just move a hole rather than remove it.
Eric, is that possible? That it could be? Yeah, no, he knows what it is. Why, he knows what it is.
I know what it is, but to complete a full game, you need to play 18. So if you're going to remove one, you might as well remove all of them.
So he's asking, could it be relocated?
Relocated rather than removed, that's all.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We can definitely do that. We have in past supported in-kind assistance. They require a four-foot concrete hole to support the pole, so it's below the frost. And so we can definitely do that. Our focus would be on prepping the course for tobogganing, so would, if, if anyone is interested in playing winter disc golf, we just simply want to make sure they're not in the impact zone of the, the sledders. So we will take that in direction to relocate it, so there's no future conflict.
I appreciate that, and I, I heard disc golf in the winter is highly popular.
With skates on.
With skates.
So, and skis. Did you want to second that then, councillor Dubrowski, with that? Are you okay with that amendment that they try to move the hole rather than remove the hole? Yeah.
Relocate the apparatus.
That's where they throw the frisbee things, right? Yeah. Okay, so we've got a motion, a second, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you for that. Am I the only one? Is that big font for that report? Okay.
Is it?
Okay, yeah, okay. I just wondered if something was wrong on my end. Pardon me? Okay, 7.7 Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo, that we have an agreement with the Niagara region for Bridge Street, Victoria Avenue, roundabout construction. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. That'll be nice to have that done and connecting the QE right to the downtown will be great to have. Item 7.8 There's a recommendation of counsel extend the incentive program. Moved by Budget Chair and Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? It's approved. Anything to do with money, I'd like to point out you're the Budget Chair. You said you liked that, so. Item 7.9 There's a recommendation regarding transit. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, Budget Chair, and seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Thank you, and that's approved. Consent Agenda. It's the will. Motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Dubrowski, that we move the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. Moving down, item 9.1 There's a resolution from the City of Kitchener to encourage the province to continue what they did with patio extensions. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that we support the resolution. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 9.2 Town of Pelham. This is just received for information. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Dubrowski, that we receive for information. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Item 9.3 Correspondence from Niagara Region Regarding Move It, Moving Transit Forward. Recommendation that counsel consent to the passage of the bylaw. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Yep, Mr. CAO?
That's correct. We're in our contract till 2024.
Yep, so it's separate.
The contract ends and it, and then it'll be up for a new contract.
Yeah, comes back to counsel.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so, I'm sorry, who made the, I lost that one. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Right, okay. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Item 9.4 City of St. Catherine's Resolution. Received for Information, moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Item 9.5 Memo from the City Clerk Regarding Legal Costs Associated with Unfounded Code of Conduct Complaints. What's the will of counsel on this one? They're looking for some direction regarding reimbursement of costs incurred from unfounded codes of conduct complaints. Counselor Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I actually thought this was in place for some reason last term. If, if somebody took a counselor for conflict of interest and they need to get a lawyer to fight it and it was, and they were not guilty of it, then the city would cover the cost. But is, is that not?
I, I thought that was the case, but I don't know. Would we go to, is Mr. Lustig, Mr. CAO, who will tackle this?
I can speak to him.
Mr. Clerk?
All right, Mr. Clerk, of course.
Yeah, if, if the solicitor's on the line, he may want to offer further comments, but what has happened here in, in the past is that obviously there's been quite a few code of conduct complaints that have been submitted. In some cases, counselors have sought some legal advice and naturally incurred some costs. When those are, those allegations are unfounded, the counselor is left with a bill for having to defend himself or herself. We first looked at going through the claims process, through the risk management, looking at whether or not this should go through the city's insurance. In, in some cases, that is not possible. Also, the city does have an indemnification bylaw that exists. But I think what is being looked for and recommended by staff is to get some direction to look specifically at the code of conduct complaints and getting legal advice for those. And, you know, I've been looking at other municipalities to see if that exists. I've spoken to the Integrity Commissioner and some of his staff. And we were able to find one other location, as mentioned in the memo, through the Durham School Board, where they do offer assistance up to $5,000 to cover those legal fees. But it is specific to the code of conduct. Not through some of the other processes such as claims or indemnification bylaw. I do see that Mr. Lustig is with us and he may have some further comments to offer.
Mr. Lustig, did you want to weigh in on this one?
Sure, I think Bill has properly described this. It's really an effort to get some direction from counsel because I think there were some members of counsel who were requesting that staff look at this. But specifically with respect to legal costs incurred by members of counsel who successfully defend code of conduct complaints as opposed to situations where a member of counsel has to defend and is able to defend successfully a claim in the court or a complaint in the court for a conflict of interest. It goes to the Superior Court under the municipal conflict of interest type. That situation is different than what we're trying to get direction on here. That situation is covered by our insurance and the insurance pays back a member of counsel, subject to some policy limitations. In the event that the council member is successful in defending him or herself in a conflict of interest situation. So again, this is about an area that isn't covered currently either by the indemnity bylaw that exists and has existed for some time. It is quite fulsome and it doesn't, it, it isn't covered by any insurance that we have because there is no insurance for this. This is directly related to a complaint against any one of members of counsel for a code of conduct violation or alleged violation that is successfully defended. And I think the material that Bill has provided to the counsel indicates that there is one institution, a school board, that has such a policy and they have a, a limit of, I think it's $5,000 for illegal expenses in those cases. And as you can imagine, in a, in a code of conduct violation case, you're not in a court. You don't have to present evidence under oath. There's no examination, cross-examination, argument, disclosure of documents and all of that. It's the Integrity Commissioner asking for responses by the complainant and the respondent and interviewing the, the complainant and the respondent. So it's a much more restricted situation where to this point, to my knowledge, there haven't been too many lawyers involved, but they could be in defending members of counsel. But the, the cost in a successful defense that then is borne by the member of council might be seen by all of you to be unfair. So that's what's before you.
Okay, thank you. I, I was a little confused because I was more concerned about conflict of interest, but that is covered? Is it covered up to a certain amount or is it?
Yeah, sorry, through you, Mayor. I think the policy limit is at large, it's $100,000. So that's, that's already covered. It's a reimbursement policy and it covers a case that goes to the court under the act and the defense costs, legal costs, related costs in defending successfully. If it's not successful, then the insurance doesn't pay.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we, up to $5,000?
Okay, so is that, is that now for conflict of interest or for code of conduct?
Well, conflict of interest covered.
It's already covered, right.
So that was my main concern. So if code of conduct, it's not, you don't hire, usually hire a lawyer, do you?
So do we need anything for that one? It's just bad behavior.
I think the motion is just for us to bring back more information if you want us to go into that.
Oh, I see. So the recommendation is, do we want them to bring back information on it or do we leave it the way it is and say? Because we already have coverage for conflict of interest. This is for.
We'll just leave it the way it is then.
So then, well, what would the?
The recommendation, right?
Well, the recommendation is they're asking us for some direction.
Not to proceed.
Okay, so you have a motion from Counsel Strange that staff do not proceed gathering information for reimbursing costs for a code of conduct complaint. Counsel Campbell, second. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, want to oppose? All right. Item 9.6 Niagara Compliance Audit Committee Notice of Decision. Thank you. Motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Dubrowski, that we receive and file. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, we have to bring Counsel Peter Angelo back in. Sorry, forgot about that. Just grab him. Because he's got it, you know, he's got to do the bylaws. We can't, the bylaws are a lot of. Not yet, but we're almost there. Item 9.7 We have proclamation and flag raising requests from Crime Stoppers that January 2022. We have flag raising and the first week of January official launch. Motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Item 9.8 Noise Bylaw Exemption. We have a conflict. You don't have to leave. Formerly Cardinal Newman, they're gonna be having a, a roof done. There's gonna be noise. Okay, for exemption from the noise bylaw, motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? Approved. Could somebody go get Counsel Peter Angelo, bring him back? Okay, item 9.9 Motion to receive for information correspondence from the region. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Campbell, that we receive the information from the region. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Item 9.10 Transit Concern, Transit Route Coverage Senior Advisory Committee. Recommendation that we refer this to staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Ryanone?
This was a report I referenced earlier. When you read the letter, that, that apartment building is full of seniors. Moving that bus stop is, is going to be very prohibitive for a lot of them. Particularly getting to groceries or doctor's appointments. And I really think we need to reconsider that.
Okay, so I'm just looking at it here, letter from. Is this the one, which one is this from? The Cloud Road one?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I agree in the sense that, you know, we need to have a second look at it, but I don't know that counsel is gonna have the wherewithal to make changes on the fly in terms of transit routes.
No, right.
So I think it's something that we do need to send back to staff, your worship. I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay, so, okay, so we got a motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Campbell, that we refer this to staff. Right? All those in favor? All right, thank you for that. We have one resolution regarding Employment Land Strategy Phase Three Report. Looking for a motion to move the resolution, basically Secondary Plan Prepared for Grassy Brook Area. Yes, Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would that be changed because we didn't take recommendation number three? We didn't take all of the recommendations.
Yeah, for the interim control bylaw.
Right.
Yeah, so Mr. CAO? Secondary plan. Can they still do the secondary plan without the interim control bylaw?
It's a deferral. We'll report back. So we defer that also.
Defer the, yeah, okay, good catch, counselor. Okay, so motion for deferral then, counselor? Okay?
Motion for deferral.
By Counsel LaCoco, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. Could someone get Counsel Peter Angelo back? All right, perfect. We're at. No, in, there's no in camera, right, Mr. Clerk? Okay, so yeah, we're looking.
I'm sorry, can't hear through your mask. Oh, hold on, the clerk's got to say.
Well, much, much like the ratification, or sorry, the resolution there, we'll renumber the bylaws. Then they will start at 2021 131 and we'll remove 135. So anything after 135 will just get renumbered and it will end then at 2021 139.
Counsel Peter Angelo, you're moving, giving the bylaws a first and second. And third reading with the amendment just suggested by the clerk, seconded by Counsel Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. New business? Counsel, oh, we got everybody. Okay, good. We'll start Counsel Dubrowski, LaCoco, Thompson.
I'll be quick. I have two. The Millennium Clock Message Board at Dorchester and Morrison. I was driving, I'm always passing through that intersection. I noticed a spooky awards advertisement back in October. And I thought it'd be great maybe if we could just have communications staff or the communications department maybe just implement just as part of their protocol, as community events come forward, they can input them into the Millennium Clock Message Board. And same with not-for-profits. And I'm looking on the website, the website, I'm not saying it's dated, but I think Counsel Thompson could maybe chime in. But I know there was a, a time there where the message board wasn't working, where the clock wasn't working.
No, I actually think they just replaced it this year.
They just, okay.
But they didn't do it all. It couldn't really be a lot better. But the original was better.
Oh, okay.
Either way, in terms of the message board, it's a road that's traveled widely by everybody across the community. So if I can make a motion that we have communication staff, just keep that sign updated on a, on a regular basis.
Any particular, any events in particular you're thinking about?
Not-for-profit, community-oriented events. I'm not sure if there's.
Like the downtown Christmas market as an example?
Downtown Christmas market would be a perfect one. I think there's only two weekends left, but that would have been a great opportunity where the downtown could have utilized that, that display board. All BIAs, BIAs could implement some advertising on that board. So if I could put that on the floor.
Motion by Counsel Dubrowski, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that we direct staff to, communication staff to include community events on our sign at the Millennium Clock, including the downtown Christmas market. Immediately change that. Okay, all those in favor?
Just have a look at the website.
In the website?
I just, I think the page is a little outdated.
Updated, okay.
Not that, not in a bad way, but have a look, Sean. The second one, the Sparkle Awards.
So direction of staff to have a peek at the website is what you're saying?
Is what I think, yeah, please.
But for what piece of that? Just the Millennium Clock piece?
Yeah, if you look at the Millennium Clock Message Board page on the city's website, it just says that it's under refurbishment. If you want to submit an advertisement, you have to wait, sort of thing.
I'll speak direct.
I don't know why. Unless I'm looking at an old page.
No, no.
Not trying to throw anyone under the bus, but I just did.
Okay, great.
The Sparkle Awards. We, we took those on last year following the successful spooky awards. And I know this year, just due to staff, resources and time, we kind of scaled it back a little bit. It's a great event, great community event. And speaking with the executive director downtown, Queen Street, they've actually agreed to potentially take it over and bring that competitive component back and kind of take all the logistics, maybe with support from city staff and the IT department on the mapping system. But wanted to make a motion that we have staff, probably from the Rec and Culture Department, just to do a follow-up with Amanda McDonald at the, at the BIA, put in a formal request that they take it over from the city next year and they lead the charge. And in saying that, I know this year we're doing more of, what do we call it? More of a participatory Sparkle Awards with no prizes or we have minimal prizes. Wanted to maybe put a motion on the floor where we request $1,000 for prizing for this year. Again, we can implement through the Rec, hopefully, department, some judging. We can utilize some of the volunteers that we've had in the past for the spooky award judging and the Sparkle Awards judging. So again, not trying to take staff time away, but just definitely want to give back to the community. I think it's, it's an event that was very well received. It's been going on for, for many years. The Festival of Lights coordinated it for, for 10 or 20 years. I'm not sure exactly how many. But either way, I don't want to see that festival go away. And I'd like to at least, you know, all the hard work and effort that people put into their, into their displays, weeks and months. I think Danny Petty on Thorold Stone Road started last year for this year. But if we could, if I could put a motion on the floor where we, we come up with $1,000 just to, to make sure that we're providing community members, recognizing all their hard work.
Yeah, some reward for that. Yeah, okay.
Whether it be 10 gift certificates for $100 that they can put towards next year.
Okay, so, okay, we got seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Yes, Counsel LaCoco?
I was going to second that, but I want to declare a conflict on the BIA, that, that part of it.
Yep, no, no problem there. So, yeah, and that's great. And it's ironic, I got an email today from someone that said, I can't believe you guys at the last minute are changing things. I've been working on my, like, they put in serious effort into this. Like, they can't believe it, you know?
There's passion.
No, so there's got to be some reward for all these efforts, right? Certainly, they spend a lot more money than they're ever gonna get back.
Hundred percent. And then I think next year with the BIA taking the lead on it, we could help a lot of the businesses downtown come up with prizing. So it just creates an economic impact. It's a community event and we can. So it just creates an economic impact, it's a community event, and we can kind of support it, but at the same time have somebody else lead the charge so our staff can work on other things that we're busy with.
Oh, that's perfect. Okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Dubrowski, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo with one noted conflict piece to the motion. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved.
Just lastly, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. The next time we do this, it might be a different group of people around the table, but anyway, wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas and look forward to working with you all next year.
Thank you. Did you not also have something about the downtown, that Survivor?
No.
Okay, okay, all right.
No, I don't think that was me.
Okay, maybe not.
Very cool, though. I reached out to that lady on behalf of something else for Comic-Con next year.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, cool.
And I'm not sure she could probably speak to anything right now.
No, but the next Wednesday is going to be the series where.
Finale?
Yeah, they're going to show it downtown, I understand.
Oh, okay.
So the downtown BIA is going to have a screening and do an outdoor viewing of Survivor.
Okay.
With her on, it's huge, yeah.
Well, and it's the final episode, which means she made it to the final and she's probably like locked up in her basement, not allowed to talk to a soul until the final episode airs.
I think so.
Yeah, cool, anyway.
Did you want to speak to this point, guy? Oh, because I've got you, I've got a few people ahead of you.
Oh, okay.
So I've got Counselor LaCoco, Thompson, Strange, and then Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item. With our growth plan about where we're putting all of the extra houses to get into 2051 with that regional plan, I was talking to the CAO and I think it sort of came up today. I don't think our residents can appreciate where we need to put all of the extra houses. So I did talk to the CAO and requested maybe a map to find out, okay, this is where we have empty space, this is where some of the houses go and maybe put some numbers to it because we talked about it tonight, that we don't want to keep going through this over and over every time we have growth and development. We are required to have so many houses by a certain date and we only have so much land. So I just thought maybe a visual map might help people understand where those are going to go and if we could do that, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, it's a great, did you want to?
It doesn't have to be a motion. We've already talked about it. I just wanted to bring it up today because I think this is going to happen every single time we have developments come up and that's why I wanted to bring it up.
I'm glad he's taking direction from you, he doesn't take it from me, so that's good. We've got next on the list, Counselor Thompson.
Yes, about a week ago, I got on my computer a letter. It was dated September 20th. And it went to the bylaw and had nothing to do with bylaw. So I called the people involved and this was Simo Rudin and Carmen Grisafi that have the adult entertainment. And they are really in serious trouble with respect to attracting entertainers at the, and they wrote this to the region and wanted to have some changes with the licensing because Mississauga, Ottawa, Windsor, London, and all the big cities have a totally change in licensing. And so they weren't coming here anymore and they're having a serious problem. So we got in touch with the region and the mayor and I had a Zoom meeting with them and said, can you help out here with respect to the financial, they were charging them $150 and everybody else is zero. And so they said, we would, $50 would be the fee. And we talked to both the owners and they said, well, that's better than, maybe that's going to help out. So they just wanted a motion that the council supports that so they can help them out. So I was so moved.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we have our licensing fee for the adult entertainment because of COVID lowered to $50 with, and I think the renewal was going to be $25, more in line with other licensed services with the region and that falls in line with our discussions with the region, right?
That's not true. I asked him, Wayne can dance?
No, his dancing days are behind him.
Still got pictures of him.
Oh, yeah, he's got pictures. So that's, what's that?
One second.
Okay, well, I got a seconded from, by Counselor Dubrowski, but thank you for that, but you can vote for it. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous? Thank you, Wayne, you got that one done? Uh, yes, Mr. Clerk?
Can I just clarify, because what I heard you say was our licensing fee, but this is the region's fee.
Yes, but we set the fee, they collect the money. They said it's our bylaw, but they collect, they get the money.
Okay.
So they've agreed to this, they're going to support this amount because of COVID and they said they've had to make adjustments in lots of their different licensing. And we did speak with the Commissioner of Corporate Services and the head of regional bylaw on this. Next up, I've got Counselor Strange and then Campbell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple emails from some concerned residents about the amalgamation of transit and just in particular the St. John's Ambulance chair van and how it's going to affect them. I don't know if the CAO or if Carla's on Zoom still, that she might be able to just weigh in to see what is in the future of the operations of the St. John's Ambulance chair van operations.
Through the chair and I'll have Carla jump in if I make any mistakes, but paratransit services are part of the required services of the new commission. So there's a, the costs and the service requirements will be uploaded to the new commission. It's likely that the contracts would be maintained for a period of time, but the new commission will then decide how they want to deliver paratransit. And because now you're on a regional basis, they might decide to go a different, a different approach, but it'll be for the new commission to decide, but the service, that service to the residents will be maintained. It just, it might not be the, you know, the existing provider. However, you know, it'll take some time for the commission to actually make the transition period. So we'll be in discussion with that service provider so that they're up to date on exactly what's happening with the upload of the services to the region.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And the second one is just, we're having our seventh annual Dalton's Wish toy drive and that's going to be on December 15th at Boston Pizza on Dorchester and Morrison from four to seven. And you guys all know the story, you know, Dalton, Jake's from Welland, a young teen who had osteosarcoma and, you know, they thought they had the diseased bone and they took it out of his leg, but unfortunately it spread to his jaw. And, you know, I remember in 2015 during Christmas and he wasn't feeling very well and he was at Ronald McDonald House with his family and we asked, we said, Dalton, you know, what do you want for Christmas? You met Sidney Crosby, your favorite hockey player, like, what do you want? Anything, we'll give you whatever you want. And he goes, Mike, he goes, I just want presents for all the family and their siblings that are staying here at Ronald McDonald House because he loved Ronald McDonald House so much. Because it not only affects the parents and the sick children who just steps away at the hospital, but it affects their siblings, especially during tough times and holidays. And Ronald McDonald House right now, they're on strict restrictions because they can't come out of their room, they can come out for a half hour to cook some stuff, but, you know, normally it's just wide open, but because of COVID, they have strict restrictions. And they are actually, every night, they go knock on the family's door on all the rooms and they give them a present every single night in December, which is just amazing. And, but you can imagine how many toys they run out of and it's something that Dalton loved, he loved it there. And the majority of people that use Ronald McDonald's Hamilton are from this area because they drive there, they have to have a place to stay. So they stay at Ronald McDonald House, they park at Ronald McDonald House, and you can imagine just the parking alone at McMaster Children's Hospital would be 50 to 100 bucks a day. So it's just a very special place. So Rob Phillips from Boston Pizza is continuing his legacy and we're going to have that next Wednesday from four to seven and he even offered 15% off anyone during that event would like to come dine in or takeout. So he's been a real great guy in letting us continue Dalton's legacy and Dalton's Wish and I know his parents are going to be there and they're very, very proud of what his legacy is right now. And taken away too far, too soon, and not the right order of life, but we do continue on his legacy and helping other families. So four to seven, December 15th, Boston Pizza.
That's awesome.
So unwrapped toys, anywhere from infant to 18 years of age that we're asking for.
Do you want to talk about this ornament as?
And Ms. Kay, so Caitlin, who was our little girl at the Christmas parade and Cheryl Vanatilly, who had her at the Queen Bean and South Santa and lit up the Christmas tree too. So, you know, she's just a great bubbly young girl and she's just amazing. So she, her mom gave me that ornament for you to put up on your tree and wanted to thank you, Mayor, for having her there and just putting a smile on her face and thank you again for everyone down at the BIA and Cheryl Vanatilly and everyone, I just, it was amazing, just the Christmas tree and she lit it up and everyone was just chanting, light that tree, light that tree. It was pretty amazing and it was, it felt like you were in like probably New York City or something like that, the big tree in Center Park. So just, it was great and hopefully that'll continue next year. So I just want to thank Caitlin for, and Caitlin's mom for giving that ornament to you.
Yeah, so you're going to hang that on the tree and it was, you're right, because at the end of the parade, so it was just a massive crowd and they all followed the tree and they surrounded the whole courtyard of City Hall and, like you said, they're trying to do some dignitary speeches and they started chanting, light that tree. Yeah, so we let, she lit the tree, she flipped the switch and got her little wheelchair up close and it was, she was just giddy. She was so excited to see it and that Christmas tree up front is gorgeous, right? It's like Rockefeller Square, it's beautiful. So, and interesting enough, the history on that tree, that tree was moved from across town. That was in front of one of the schools, it was in the way and so in the seventies they moved it in front of City Hall and here we are, we've got that tree. It's really a cool story. So thank you for the ornament for Caitlin. Thank you for that, Counselor Strange, and we've got Counselor Campbell patiently waiting.
Thank you, your worship. This is more for information purposes. The diversification and inclusivity committee has lost two members, excuse me, for a variety of reasons, justifiable, and we would like to put it out there and maybe we could put something on our website that we would like to see two, at least two more people back on the committee and we would really, really, really like to see a representative from the indigenous community.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great, thank you for that. And maybe through our social, our communications, we can get that word out to, for that messaging. Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo, you've got something too?
Yeah, I do, your worship.
Look at that, okay.
Now the time?
The floor is yours.
Okay, thanks, your worship. I read in the paper this week that the provincial government was putting more money into homelessness in Niagara and they identified different sites in St. Catherine's, Niagara Falls and Welland, and they were working with, it says Shelter Health Network and Reach Niagara. And I believe it said in the newspaper article that they were putting almost a million dollars next year into this, into this cause and then in 2023, another half a million dollars. And I know, your worship, sometimes we can be critical of the government, you know, for not putting enough money into homelessness. So I guess what I wanted to do was actually thank the government for recognizing that we do need extra funds down here and for putting the money into homelessness, your worship. So I would make a motion that we send a letter, you know, thanking the government for their support.
Okay, motion from Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that we thank the provincial government for their extra investment into, is it affordable housing?
No, it's homelessness, your worship.
Homelessness, homelessness. Because everyone's quick to criticize, you know, but they sometimes forget to compliment at the same time, right? It incentivizes them to do more when you do stuff like that. So we have a motion, seconded, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved. And I guess I'll, yep, just before we do, and I want to do the same thing, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas. All of our Jewish friends just finished Hanukkah and we were down there with the rabbi down in Queen Victoria Park and that was a really neat event as well. And it's just a nice family time and let's hope that everything goes the way it's going. This Omicron is not going to be what they were concerned about, it's seeming so far it's not. And the families can get together again and they can spend that quality time that they missed and once again spend that time together, gathering over their meals and around their trees and around their presents and whatever it is that they do, that families can be together once again and friends. So on behalf of the city, I want to wish everybody happy holidays and a Merry Christmas and whatever it is you celebrate, may you celebrate it and enjoy yourself. Health and happiness and we'll see everybody next year. Thank you, motion for adjournment, Counselor Dubrowski, seconded by Counselor LaCoco. All those in favor? We are adjourned for 2021.